Is it there now?
Yeah. There we go. We need to order. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, native visible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Father God, we thank you for this day. We thank you for this opportunity to come together. We ask that you be with us and guide us in all we do. We ask this in Jesus' name. Amen. All right. Welcome to the July 21st Bourbon County Commission Meeting. I ask that you turn your cell phones to silent or off. If you have private conversations, please take them out to the lobby. We welcome comments from the public at their appropriate times. We'll call on it or we'll open it up and we welcome criticism as much as we welcome praise. So just ask that you be respectful. So again, welcome and we'll get started with the first order of business. Approval of the agenda. Is there any corrections?
Yeah. And right by five, Emerson Payroll and Benefits, go ahead and put stronghold back on there. They stuck around, I think, because they didn't get it all done.
You got them on the executive session, is that?
Right, but I don't know if they want to say anything.
Okay, so put them right with that, okay.
Yeah, and then also an old business. Let's put Public Works Safety Audit on there, and that's yours. That's the one you've been kind of moving down. You finally got your stuff for it, so.
Okay, so then old business, you said?
Yeah, because it had been on about five agendas.
What do you want it at in that list?
Just right under, right under the IT reoccurring billing, be fine.
Okay, Mr. Tran. Anything you want to add?
No, sir. I had two items. I added one on there, the Marion Township request today.
Right.
And I have the liaison issue. That's all I have for now, sir.
Okay, and I don't know how, on the security cameras, we also moved along to this week was the memorandum on hiring and firing. So I think I'll just add, you know, we'll just add that to the security cameras at that time, too, because that was, you know, we'll do it at that time. But discuss that further. That was on last week and we tabled it to this week.
Yes, sir.
So we're scratching security cameras?
No, we're going to keep it and just add that memorandum.
Okay. Okay.
Okay. I move that we approve the agenda as corrected.
One second. Beer barrel?
Yes.
Milburn?
Yes.
Tran?
Yes.
Okay, I move that we approve the, well, back up. Is there any corrections to the minutes from 7:14 2025 and 7:15 2025?
There was just one doubled word that I sent the clerk and it wasn't a big deal. I changed it. Okay.
Okay, I move that we approve the minutes from 7:14 2025 and 7:15 2025 as distributed.
One second. Tran?
Yes.
Beer barrel?
Yes.
Milburn?
Yes.
Okay. Discussion on consent agenda. Accounts payable. Any questions, concerns, discussion?
No, sir.
Commissioner, nope. Okay, June financials?
No comment, sir.
No. Second quarter financial publication?
Nothing, from my point of view.
And tax corrections? Any concerns, discussion? Okay, so I move that we approve the consent agenda, approval of 7:18 2025 accounts payable totaling $540,142.25. June financials, second quarter financial publication and tax correction. Corrections.
Second.
Tran?
Yes.
Beer barrel?
Yes.
Milburn?
Yes.
And next on the order of business is Emerson Payroll and Benefits. Commissioner Milburn, you have the floor.
Okay. Looks like he heard his name.
Hi, how are you?
Hi.
Good evening.
Welcome.
Good evening. Thank you.
I'll start off, though. I apologize I didn't call you back. I've been trying. I just didn't get to it.
It's quite all right. It's quite all right. You guys have a lot on your plate.
Yes. We have your proposal. We all have it in front of us. So if you want to go over things, tell us what we need to know.
Yep. So a little bit about me. My name's Tim Emerson, Jr. I own Emerson and Company in Kansas City, Missouri. We've been in business since 2006. Our core businesses are payroll, accounting, merchant services, and insurance. What's unique about us is that we offer many national name payroll companies like ADP, Paycor, ISOL, Paychex, Payentry. We're not really trying to sell a particular platform as much as we are a service bureau. So we go through a discovery process and help entities kind of navigate that process, if you will. In this case, for Bourbon County, we're recommending Payentry. Payentry is a company out of Charlotte, North Carolina. Their software has been around since 1994. Notable licensee of Payentry is Cbiz that a lot of people are familiar with. Cbiz is a publicly traded company in accounting consulting and benefits. Payentry has about 65,000 employers that pay a little over 2.1 million employees monthly. Emerson and Company is one of 50 service bureaus that works with Payentry and we're one of the top ones with Payentry. But again, I want to reiterate, in Missouri, we're the largest wholesaler for ADP in the state of Missouri and it's just that I didn't feel like this was the best fit for the county. The, a couple of counties that we've worked with, New Madrid County, Pitts in Pennsylvania. We have 26 other municipalities and counties that we work with. We primarily are working with benefit brokers like Don Doherty, who handles your benefits now. We're in St. Louis, Oklahoma City, Wichita, Kansas City. We work with companies all across the country, but our network of professionals that refer business to us, we don't have a direct sales team, is typically centered in the Midwest. We work with Integra in Wichita and we work with TPP in Overland Park. We actually do the payroll for TPP, which is a large accounting firm in Overland Park, Kansas. Couple little notes. We're very excited that we won the Small Business Award for the KC Chamber a couple of years ago as a fan favorite. I think it was a popularity contest, but it's pretty good for the city of Kansas City. A similar contest in St. Louis, we ranked sixth, so I thought, felt like that was pretty good and we've been in their market for a little over two years. So one of the things that I wanted to kind of point out is a little unique with this Payentry platform. The reason why I felt like it's done so well in New Madrid County is that we have a dedicated account advocate. That means there's a single person that's going to be responsible for that client experience, if you will. So people are on vacation, kids need to be picked up at school. That person is still responsible for the team even that supports her would be that. And your person would be, it would be Shereen that is the person that would handle your account. Jolene would be the person that would do the onboarding. And Christina Thompson would be the one that would do the demo and kind of the discovery process, meaning really interacting, I think, with your team and trying to find out what would really be the best way to kind of navigate that.
What was that last name, please?
Christina Thompson. She's a Senior Vice President with Payentry in Charlotte, North Carolina. So one thing that we typically would like to do is we would recommend that departments, somebody in each department would be responsible for submitting the time and attendance. So it breaks it down a little more granular and you can create that hierarchy really however you decide you want to do that. And then ultimately you would have somebody that would kind of give it the final blessing, so to speak, because it's somebody in-house that is going to be familiar with your, you know, situation. Shereen would be your, on an ongoing basis, she would be your point of contact that would answer any questions, garnishments, child support. All of those issues would be taken care of through just a single email and a single point of contact. I own the company. I would be the one providing oversight. You guys would all have my cellphone number. I grew up in this community. I went to high school. I graduated in 1985. So I certainly have a vested interest in making sure this is a great, you know, situation. So we've worked with Dr. Steve Cohen before on other cases and specifically in New Madrid is one where he actually brought us in. We were able to implement that with the commissioners. I met with them and it was kind of an interesting experience. I was there after hours, so they made dinner for me and I walked in, there was a deer rifle in the front door. I was like, okay, I better be on my best behavior. Not quite this formal in the setting. So again, applicant tracking, onboarding, screening for work opportunity, tax credits. I like the transparency of this particular platform for Bourbon County. It's a flat rate per paid employee per month, not per active employee that's in the process. We were very instrumental in helping kind of our clients go through the CARES Act and during that COVID period. And we saw a lot of institutions that had a lot of volatility. They didn't lay them off. They kept them active. But we weren't billing them for people that they weren't paying, so to speak. So I really like that as well. Time and attendance. There's three different ways that you can do time and attendance. There can be, so it's kind of an omnibus solution. You can have people punching in and out from a cellphone that could be geo-fenced. They could be punching in and out from a, like an IP address at their desk. Or you could have a tablet up where they could, any tablet would work where it has a four-digit code. We do have more robust time and attendance solutions, biometrics, things like that, thumbprints, badges. Those would be an additional cost to what we quoted here, but I don't feel like it would be necessary. We offer opportunities for employees that are maybe distressed to pull some money off of their paycheck through a solution called Zazzoom. It's integrated with the payroll system. And also background checks, that type of thing would be additional depending on the screening that you're doing. But it's also incorporated within the payroll system. So the beauty is you're kind of having one central source of truth, not utilizing multiple different solutions, which can really create some efficiencies. Accruals, vacation tracking, PTO, all that's done within the software. Recruitment tools, so posting jobs, archiving those positions. So in the future, if another, if a position came up, you can launch that position right away. So the re-recruitment tool, onboarding tools are very powerful. You can text a link to somebody. They could click on that link and they can onboard themselves. It also asks them compliantly if you're hiring maybe a disabled veteran, for instance. There's some significant tax credits, payroll tax credits that can be garnered through that. The current benefits admin tool that you have, I believe is Employee Navigator, according to Mr. Doherty. And Payentry has a single signer login that would integrate with that. So it's an employee benefit admin tool. And so by logging into Payentry, you would be able to toggle into that benefit admin tool without having to log in and log out on a separate basis. So they built in that integration. Again, Emerson and Company is a small company. Cbiz is using this and incorporates benefits and that type of thing. And I listened to a couple of the meetings, previous meetings. One thing, when we say benefits, we're thinking a benefit admin tool, something that's used for enrolling employees or going through renewals or making changes with employee status or something like that. It's not the benefit side of selling group health insurance or something like that. When we talk about things like the HSA and FSA would be more of the compliance and reporting for COBRA. So we've got solutions for that. I think you already have solutions in place, but it'd be more of the admin piece of that, making sure that that's, that everybody's being compliant and that type of thing, which is really important. So I guess like to open it up to questions. I think probably the biggest thing that we've seen with not just public entities, but also with companies, you know, if you've had somebody that's been doing a role for a long period of time, there, a lot of that knowledge is, is within that person. And what we're doing is setting up processes that are sustainable and that have like a continuity plan. It's a lot easier if there was a change in a role that somebody can easily come in and take over that role. So I'm not sure if I'm making myself clear, but we've.
So stability, if there were changes in personnel, we wouldn't be in trouble.
And that was kind of the situation that we were in with New Madrid. And, you know, long story short, we were able to come in, implement new processes, document those processes. And again, it just allows for an easier flow of, you know, if the new person needs to come in.
Yeah.
Next steps would be if the commission decides to move forward, I would highly encourage a demonstration to look at this software and go through that discovery process, choosing which one would, how to proceed. And then, of course, the timeline, you know, typically we would look at a change at the beginning of a new quarter is typically what we would recommend. So I'd recommend maybe like an October 1st start or a January 1st start. But that's all I have. Thank you for having me. I appreciate it.
You guys have some questions?
And you mentioned that we would, we would have somebody in-house here, one of our own, that would work with you guys?
Each director, I believe. Each director would turn in their time.
Yeah, best practices. If we were starting with a clean canvas, best practices would be a department head approving their department's group. And then ultimately you'd have a final person that you would choose that would approve that payroll.
Okay.
Would the department head certify the TNA?
It can be structured however you want to. I would encourage you to have the department head approve the time and attendance.
So they would sign off and certify that it's accurate and?
That's right. Yep.
I have three questions.
Yes.
And thank you.
Of course. Appreciate it.
So who's the warm body that handles any questions? Specifically, I'm looking for somebody who has a benefits question. I understand there's a toolkit that they could use to go online, but not everybody is technically savvy or can navigate, you know, the modern toolkit. So who, who do we have on staff that could answer those questions?
Yeah. So each staff member would have access to Shereen.
Okay.
And Shereen would be the person that would address those issues.
All right. Would you help with your company assist with launching this process?
Yes, of course.
What I'm looking at is if, if and when we go with the program, I'd like to be as seamless as possible and not having stutter steps where the employees are trying to figure out who Shereen is, what her phone number is, how to do this, or maybe like, you know, an onboarding class.
Yeah, no, I thank you for the question. So most publicly traded payroll companies have what's called a net promoter score. It's probably wouldn't come as a surprise. Most of them are negative. Payentry has a positive net promoter score. And again, we are incredibly proud of the partnership that we've developed with them over the years.
So you would help us?
Absolutely, yeah. In fact, I included my cellphone number in there, so I'm all in on this.
And my last question is, you graduated here in 85.
Yes.
Was Kyle Parks your teacher? I'm trying to find somebody that Kyle Parks has never taught.
I, I don't think he was my teacher, no.
Well, thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Chairman, I have lots of questions. May I?
Yes, go ahead.
So my department handles this, and so I just have lots of questions on how it integrates. Third party time center, I understand that it's going to go through Payentry. But there has to be a process where that all comes back to us and it won't integrate with our accounting software. And so how does that process look when we have the deductions? Is it one file that comes and says, okay, this is all your FICA tax, this is all your, whatever it may be. You know what I'm talking about, all the deductions, all the withdrawals. How does that come to us?
Yeah, so it could be a CSV file or Excel file, however you want it to look. Our team would actually look at your chart of accounts and structure that to where you could import it. So it's an import-export situation.
Ours doesn't, ours doesn't receive imports, so it'll have to be journal entries on our side.
I, I'll take that as a takeaway, but I'm happy to do that.
It's old enough. It's an old SQL access database and they just don't, they don't take it. It would be an extra add-on that we would have to pay for. So journal entries would be what we would have to do. So that, that, the level of detail would be my concern is what, what kind of detail would we have when we receive that information?
Right. Well, so again, if you have the chart of accounts, we can build that journal to where it'll, it'll allow that to feed in there, I would think.
Okay.
But I'm happy to take, I'll take that away and I'd be happy to get our general ledger team on the phone with you and work through that.
Sure, sure.
We've done, sorry to interrupt, but just to be clear, like we've worked with Tyler Technology, for instance, which is one.
I would love to have Tyler Technology, but we can't afford it.
We've also worked with a company up in Gallatin, Missouri called Landmark. It's a five-generation company that uses an old AS400 IBM system and we were able to work that out.
Unfortunately, most of the cities and county, or most of the counties in the state of Kansas use what's called CIC, Computer Information Systems. And we are pretty locked in with what we can and can't do.
Sure.
My other thing would be is, is the expectation for any of the personnel records to be held within our system? Or will they all be housed with you? So we get lots of COR requests for people's pay. That's all COR discoverable. How will that be disseminated? Will there be somebody here on staff that will be the one that's looking at that as being the COR person? I would have to have some kind of access to that or have a person that I can get that information very quickly.
So a couple of things, and I think I understand your question, a couple of things. Employees will have access to all their pay stubs and W2s directly from a mobile app. It's multiple languages.
These are public residents asking for the information.
Gotcha.
And I have to disseminate it to them.
Yep. So that access would be from the point that we started doing payroll going forward, it would be all harbored within Payentry.
Okay.
If for some reason you left Payentry, you would still have access to that. That's unlike any other payroll company. Normally they would charge a fee for that kind of access. We have a team that would help go through and, and help you save those files of historical information.
Okay.
We can kind of go through what best practices would be and what you would do. So you would have that historical information and Payentry would be able to preserve that information for an unlimited period of time.
Okay. We aren't traditional. We don't have 401Ks. We don't have, we don't have 457 plans. We work with CAPers. So do you work with CAPers or will we have to have a designated agent here?
No, no, we would be able to handle all the deductions for you and be able to, if they'll take an electronic feed, we can do that. Typically on 401K plans that don't have a direct integration, I suspect now you move the money and then you send a allocation report.
Yes.
So that's going to look exactly the same that it is right now.
We do an upload to their system and then we reconcile it. So do you reconcile those bills for us?
We'd be happy to reconcile, but that's not part of this, that's not part of this engagement.
Okay.
Or scope of work, I guess.
That would be the other thing. That would be a missing piece of reconciliation of all the benefits. We actually do that in-house. And so for every benefit, we have to reconcile every billing. So that would be one thing that would be critical.
Sure.
Termination notices, paperwork, things like that, that would be handled by Payentry?
Termination notices would be handled through your HR person.
Okay.
We would make sure that all the compliance, you know, I9s, all that type of stuff would have done through. So there's a kind of an allocation of resources there. But terminations would be done typically through your HR person.
Okay, so is our HR person willing to do I9s and things like that? Because that is not held with him at this current time. That would be a question that I would ask.
So I visited with Dr. Cohen about this. So again, Payentry would do the W4s, I9s, all that type of compliance. Steve, Dr. Cohen would do the COBRA announcements and things like that.
Okay, so he would, he would let, let the company know when that would have to happen?
That's right.
Okay. Sorry, I'm just reading through my notes. Currently with FSA, it's not integrated through Employee Navigator. Neither is our HSA. And so those are all done manually.
Okay.
They would have to be, they do not, the HSA is a local bank, small, probably doesn't do feeds, doesn't do things like that. So that would be an issue. FSA, at the time when they set it up, it was not able to integrate. I think it can future integrate, but it has to be timed just right. That would be something that would have to be worked out with the broker. When we have CAPers, people retiring from CAPers, they have a lot of questions and they tend to come to us for the support. And there's a designated agent for the organization. So that would be something that would be important. I don't know if, like on your platform, you'd have a, hey, here's a number you call or if there's that personal connection on CAPers.
We do have engagements like that, but I believe that's something that Dr. Cohen would be taking care of. I know on the FSA and the HSA that you have right now, those are not, those have not been fully integrated with where they're at. We'd love to facilitate in that.
Okay. Also, our EAP program is not integrated. That would be another one. Qualifying life events. Is the expectation that the employee would know that they have to go out and do a QLE on the portal?
I don't know the answer to that. I'll find out.
Okay. Let's see. So right now, currently my office has to do the administration of Section 125, which is not yours, but that is done through our broker. But it is very reliant on my office to be able to disseminate what our programs are, what we have, what's tax exempt and things like that. So there's a lot of, I feel like there's a lot of things that have to happen to make this all work seamlessly with a lot of communication. We also have to do a Bureau of Labor Statistics monthly reporting. Is that something that your company does?
If it's part of the payroll, we'll take care of it.
Okay.
I also, to your previous comment, I've met with Mr. Doherty and there's a high level of interest in supporting the county. And we will absolutely collaborate to do everything we can to help.
I mean, a lot of these other questions, are they something that?
Yeah, I think they're very important.
Well, if we make the, if we make the approved, that would be able to work directly with your office in there rather than continue.
We can, we can do that. That's fine. I do have a question as, why, why some of these services, no offense to you.
None taken.
Why are they not bid out like other things? That's a question that I have. There could be other opportunities. You know, we currently work with RPS. I think they are just a benefits administrator, but there, there are definitely companies that do this all over the place. So, you know, we set, we set requirements for, for some things, but not for others. And so are we going to put these things out to bid or are we just going to get one vendor to look at it? So that would be my question. This has nothing to do with you. You know, when we do the budget process, as, as department heads, as the. You know, when we do the budget process, as, as department heads, as elected officials, we ask for resources to help us. This would be an added cost, in my opinion, to the county. And if my budget, if my budget request is not, cannot be funded, then that's all you have to say, can't be funded. And we'll continue to do what we're doing. We don't need to have an added cost. So, you know, I think that's my biggest thing, is I was not consulted about any of this. And I think we could have, you know, maybe work to a common goal. I have two employees in my office, and we do our best to get everything done efficiently, on time. And probably our biggest problems, and something that you would even face, is we constantly have missed time punches. We don't have terminations done properly. And those are all things that we can't control.
That's not an uncommon problem, so the software is really designed to flag those missed punches, whether it's a lunch or they didn't punch out. And so that's why I think allocating, or delegating that to the department heads, we're not having as much on you. I think it would be better.
It's there now, it's just, it doesn't get resolved. And so, to push payroll through, we try to, try to do that.
We're gonna, we're gonna move on. And, I mean, just, this is the beginning, so I, you know, if we're going to open it up for bid process, we're going to probably bring in a couple more companies.
I was asking that, that was never said, it was just said, this is the-
Valid, valid point, I mean, valid point.
Yeah, so I-
And I'm not offended, I would gladly give over payroll and benefits, but, you know, I, when a budget process is done, you ask what you, what you would like to have, you don't have to produce it, so.
Yeah, if I may, as I mentioned from the top, we're a very large wholesaler for PayEntry. We work with ADP, we're the largest wholesaler for ADP in the state of Missouri for their run product. I'd be happy to submit quotes on paychecks, PayCorps, ADP. The reality of it is, is that we've had great experience with PayEntry and with Dr. Cohen on this particular platform for a very similar-sized county that we just recently brought on. And it, I'm not here to say that those are easy task, not trying to minimize that. What I'm saying is that we've been able to help navigate that process. You'd have my contact information, and I would, I'll do everything I can to roll up my sleeves and help.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sheriff.
Yes, have a good day.
You too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Of course, thanks.
I'll be in touch then.
And next, next up is Stronghold, do we, are they going to come back up?
They're still here. Welcome back.
Welcome back.
Okay, so this will be, so you can finish up anything, and then we can, we, right, right behind this, we have a, we can open it up to executive session.
What we covered earlier, I think I'm done, unless there's any questions from the, from the commission before we share the executive-
Did you need to see the commission altogether in one place to talk about your executive?
There's some things that, that's in the report that I would like to, you know, point out specifically. That contains, you know, information relating to security-
Okay.
That would be better served in executive session. I don't know if there's, with request, you know, some of this information deals with some of the other items on your agenda. You know, some of the information, so, like the cameras in the 911 center, and I know that Sheriff is here, might be good for him to be a part of that if he- Part of that conversation.
Okay, you want the, you want Bob? He's our lawyer.
Yeah, sorry.
Okay, so Stronghold, Adam, Jason, Sheriff, Bob.
Okay. I was gonna invite the 911, but Chief, Chief, okay. I move that we go into executive session pursuant to KSA 754319B12 to discuss matters relating to security measures. If the discussion of such matters at an open meeting would jeopardize such security measures. The commissioners, the county counselor, and Stronghold personnel, and the sheriff, I believe.
How long, Jason?
What I'm-
How long?
Fifteen minutes.
She said no.
And we'll return back to these chambers at 6:20.
Is it possible to bring those reports that I showed?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
A second. Train?
Yes.
Bear?
Yes.
No more. What time are you retiring?
Six twenty.
How are you doing? No, you, you're my old neighbor.
Did you get that? It's a, it's a really large section that could be utilized. Okay, so, but we were, so I was checking out, so I called you. I'm down with one employee on my list, and then one day I'll have men. Waiting on C.T. and they're done, because they're done, or he's ready to print, so.
What, on your keys?
And then, three items down, we're not putting on it. You just, I don't look in respect. Or a while longer.
Oh, you're gonna write that out for me.
That's fine.
It's torn. But, she went to Coffeyville today to have work on her alpha gal. I will let you know how it goes. They won't, but they'll give you an opportunity to talk about it during citizens' conference. She's in labor, in her shoulder.
Oh, really?
Yeah, it's a permanent tear. We go to the doctor, we go to the doctor tomorrow to have him read the MRI, see what we can do. She can play through it, or if it's going to, she can't move it on, she can't play through it. But, they'll have some fall ball. Just- You too. But, you can always redshirt. Not that we want to do that, but, you know. She was, she was so excited. And we did rehab for three weeks before we finally went and did an MRI, so. Had we done the MRI a little bit quicker, maybe we could have, yeah.
She's young.
I have to say that, she's, she's young.
Not an answer that you want.
No, we dealt with this with Gunner, he had three surgeries. The last surgery, they took a bone and stuck in there, because it kept dislocating, so this, did it in the socket, so it couldn't dislocate anymore. But, they told him if it didn't, that didn't work, then he would have to have shoulder replacement.
Oh, fun.
Yeah, so I'm like, you're done with football. You're done. Listen, he asked if I had a new replacement on it, and I was like, I know my spine is very large, and my knees are just amazing, I'm not replacementable, I'm not old enough. Like both, my parents had both, they're new stuff.
I'm just gonna guess, it's probably about my time.
I gotta quit sitting in Jason's line of fire, because even when I'm taking my picture, I miss the background. I can't even.
I've had people call me, and say, can you explain certain stuff? I saw you there. Yuck.
Is the bus to move a weekly segment?
You know, nobody wants to see me, especially in the sixties or seventies. Now, I did, now that's not- I did, that's because that's seventies, my very glory style.
Okay, I, I grew up on holidays. And now I think my mom likes me and said that there weren't current music stations, so she didn't have to listen to it. It just only had older songs there.
My dance, I would pull a muscle, and everybody watching me.
Fine, fine.
Yeah, no, it's-
But it never broke.
Is your microphone on?
My, my microphone's on.
Okay.
Mine's on. Is it saying no sound out here?
Somebody did.
You guys not hearing anything?
Let's go ahead and.
All right, well, I move that we return to session. Second, no action.
You're saying there's no sound?
That's what somebody said.
Then I need to record.
Okay, go ahead. Well, Michael heard it. Okay, go ahead.
She had a recorder on.
Okay. I, I move that we, we go to executive session.
Well, she needs to take a vote to.
Oh, return to session, no action.
Is that a motion?
Yeah, he did, and Sam's seconded it.
Tran?
Yes.
Beerbauer?
Yes.
Milburn? Yes.
Okay. I don't have my sheet again.
Yeah. Nope, not that one.
There we go. Okay, I move that we go into executive session pursuant to KSA seventy-five forty-three nineteen B twelve to discuss matters relating to security measures if the discussion of such matters at an open meeting would jeopardize such security measures. The meeting will include the three commissioners, the county counselor, the sheriff, the city manager, Brad Mackens, and stronghold personnel.
Adam and Jason.
Adam and Jason.
Beerbauer?
Yes.
Milburn? Yes. Tran?
Yes.
How many, how long?
Oh, ten minutes. We'll return here at six thirty-two.
Is your pastor where?
No, that's when I said, I wanted to make a comment after, before every motion. Then I, she said, then you could just pass it. I said, okay, I'll just pick his car.
They were. Jen probably was sick. Yeah, she was sick. I don't know when she'll come back. Mm-hmm, needs to be listed. And they did. I'll write that down.
Okay. Is Sheila one of the community, like, Chris, whatever his last name is?
Yeah, yeah, she's been taking care of that.
Lisa, Lisa's talking with him too. Lisa didn't.
Yes.
I want to show the. They just. He's written about it, tell me for the year. Sheriff Albert.
I move we return to session, no action.
Second. Tran?
Yes.
Beerbauer?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Going right back.
Yeah, I move that we go into executive session pursuant to KSA seventy-five forty-three nineteen B two for consultation with an attorney for the public body of agency which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship. That'd be the three commissioners, county counselor, Bob Johnson, and counsel Jacob. How long, how long? Twenty minutes? Twenty minutes? Okay, so it'll be twenty minutes, we will return at six fifty-three.
Second. Yeah, it's this one? Tran?
Yes.
Beerbauer?
Yes.
Milburn? Yes. Yeah. Getting your steps.
Pretty good, then?
My cancer, my doctor, say, there's nothing wrong with these cadences. But non will still be with me any time soon.
I like, that might get frail though.
If you're in the Sonic Cut.
Huge dilemma we're gonna be in. They, they in Spanish pharmaceuticals, making drugs comes from Spain. I, I didn't have any.
You might be, you might be in trouble. Everyone might be in trouble.
Another reason America makes good whiskey.
Yeah, don't have to whiskey.
They probably get passed, get that passed in those elections.
Yeah.
My grandpa made it in his backyard.
Start, stop, get it now.
Didn't need very much less. A lot of damage.
I gotta have one a day, or you can't. To go to sleep.
I can make it here. I'm working in Cherokee County, I'm in New York. I'm giving no folks. They're talking about their show, their show. And we're just talking, and I say, you know, I like to, I just like to try some of that stuff sometime. Tellers said, oh, why? I think you some in. I said, what? Why? Oh, yeah, we make, we don't sell it. We make it for our.
The recipe.
Say, by, he's a dear.
That wasn't very long ago. That wasn't, it was long enough. Long enough. Why are you traveling to Spain all the time? Oh, yes, he is. Half my family went there.
Yeah, my, um, they went on mission trip. Two dollars.
Sunday, yesterday. Then we're in Kansas. No, I didn't think. I don't know. That I don't, that I don't know. I know sports been, um, Houston, I know sports been that, but.
Not, not, I, I did, but not effectively.
You got me up.
So, Alan, your family friend, so we follow. The law was to talk business, and she was playing softball at the state. She what? She was playing softball at the state. Just told her later, then her father. So, we have tomorrow for an assessment. Yeah, maybe. She played with soccer. Yeah, she does a travel team. They play fourteen games at a time. And so their house, and these are the ones, these are the ones they want to be too. It's high love. She dove for the ball. Come in, come in. Next play, they play to her, and it's left field, and she may have left her play. She just threw it left, left it on the plate. She's overused. It was overused.
Throw it to a cut off.
It's a cut off. She just puts, she, she has out, yeah. And it affects people, doesn't it? It affects her muscles. So, her muscles are in pain. She can't tell when she's.
For herself.
Yes. So, she's on. Yes. And I am crossing my fingers. That's that whole process. If we can get past that, she can't. Everything's down there.
Yes, everything, everything.
Why sugar is processed through bone. I mean. So, everything that's in the test is. One way she doesn't get it's very delicious. But if she has anything that has a cross contaminated, that's six hours, she's sort of, uh, very, very subtle. We've tried that. I mean, it's an active feature here. This was. These are pressure points in the back. And lots of people, um, it's probably, they have, so. She can also give up anything that might be in your hand. So, what it can do now, she can, uh, how, she, she, and she can have any that's. So, it's red meat.
Well, I don't know what it even mean, like you said, it's products. Two or three.
It's like her makeup, she's a woman. It doesn't have the effect on the, uh, she, uh, but it, would you notice that it, it causes.
Yeah, I've never even bought them, but, uh, uh, yeah, I.
See, and that's the other thing, is it can be something like that. If it's a genetic. Probably a philosopher, maybe. It can be something very random, it's not the same thing.
Yeah, it's a weird. Yeah, it's a personal, it's a personal, in their bodies. And so, that's, so. But, um, we can't, it's fresh. And they're, they're not, they're not, they should have some sugar in it. So, they're gonna be careful about that. So, she's just like, man, what?
Did she do chickens?
She did chickens.
And that's my son, my friend. I swear I didn't work on.
No.
And I'm, we're not ever gonna.
Delton.
Yes, yes, yes.
She's got a medication that you can, well, maybe have, so. She's also like, it's late times on top of everything. So, she's got lots of. Um, this just come around to, to your, two years ago, she's very sensitive and very nervous. And she's always had this. Test. Everything makes sure, and that's how the family, they also, you were miserable. And she actually has a. If you were, but, like I said, you're in the home number, uh, have to have it. It's just.
This buddy.
Yeah.
They're just holding radio.
It isn't.
Oh, yeah, right, it does.
Some, they don't, they don't run those. Now, there are towns that's all that's attraction. They call it the left town.
She should get on the boat tops list right now, this year.
She's in, she takes. And, um, that helps, they provide brains, but she did, they wanted to know what her music was like, and so they did. Yes, it's not like this. She didn't react. She can't quite. So, it's very, very awesome. At eighteen, she got a lot of.
We knew Jan is out, kind of struck.
Yes.
And I don't know if we've seen her out like that. Her, her right.
Yeah. My dad, he had today, so it was just aggravating enough, and so somehow, I've been here.
Yeah, they go down your shoulders too, if I'm told.
And it, and it helped.
I'm used to things that go by.
Yes. Yeah, I like to get around my loved ones.
They say, I wanna share my.
But then I look at those people as well, and I'm like, that's not.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
Those are called happy lines.
Yes.
And, uh, then, then it disappeared for a while.
We haven't started, we haven't started business yet.
Then we have, no, I have not.
There was two of them.
I'm not even sure there's anything out like here.
You could take minutes.
We nominated you as the fence viewing manager last time we were here.
Oh, you did?
Yeah. Here to the fence, uh, if you're curious, we didn't know that. Comes with no pay, sorry.
Oh, man.
Scare you, not to.
Yeah, really, oh, yeah. I was just, it's kind of funny to me, the things that kept up in my head, that they know they should have taken a little longer. And then those things that could take a little time out, that I, okay, come on, I expect that to be. Should have been that. The board's assigned to me, so she wants this. Yeah, they probably are.
I used to be in charge of meetings. Oh, I bet that was bad.
So, I took a time off. And I said, okay, we have three minutes.
Smart.
And I kept, our meetings did not last over an hour. Yep. Yeah, we got this, we can visit, period.
It's awesome. And, and talk about that.
Working with him.
Guys, they just get mad, they move on.
They move on.
Oh, we all regret it.
Friend of mine, who had, uh, they recently had a death, exactly, and they had, uh, I don't know. Were they?
What did they have?
Cause they have the person, the cremial.
Yes.
And then they said their ashes, you know, time, time, timeless.
Is this the right time? What time do you say?
I can see us taking a break tonight.
Yeah, we're not very far in there, are we?
No.
Should order pizza.
What time, what time are we supposed to?
Sorry, ma'am.
All right, we're back in session. I move that we return to session.
Second.
Yes.
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 No action. All right, old business. IT reoccurring billing and contracts.
So, Susan got that to us. Do you guys all get a copy of that? These are some of the reoccurring billings that Stronghold's going to look over to see what we're doubling up on.
Yeah, I got that.
You do have a contract with Canren for a year.
Canren, one, oh, one year contract, okay. What, what, can we have a copy of that, please, so we know when we have to cancel it, so we can get in the. May?
He's just ringing.
If, that's not made a key.
There it is.
We have not made the ambush.
Well, I'll keep, I'll keep these to go, I'll go copy those for the leave. All right, so that'll be all, that's the only contract, the rest of them?
I see, I see you have a contract that always comes due, and. Looks like July. Due by August first, every year.
August, okay, so if we want to get away from CIC. And you said you'd love to have a different one, but you were stuck in CIC, so, so this is fifty-eight thousand dollars a year, what's the other one that you wanted to use?
Just to convert it, six hundred thousand. And then it's over a hundred thousand every year, so.
For the one that you wanted to use, so.
It's what the city of Scott has, but we don't have a lot of options for accounting software and state of Kansas.
So, CIC it is, then?
Yeah. We deal with it.
Those are the only two? Okay.
All right, Finn.
Um, Mr. Chairman, I just realized, um, I've kind of got to be home by eight, I'm also going to see the specialist tomorrow, so. Is there any way we could move my stuff that you need me for? I'm not sure what else, besides exactly what you need.
So, he wanted to consult you on fence viewing, we can go ahead and do that.
Is that okay?
Yeah.
Termination of juvenile contract, um.
We were still working on that, weren't we?
Well, I.
The terminate, I mean.
No, I mean, we could send a, a letter at any time, I think, let me, let me just highlight all the ones first, David. Um, you're, you're gonna need him on your zoning discussion, um.
Uh, actually not, cause that's just a planning session right now, we're not gonna talk about, we're just gonna talk about where we're gonna move forward.
Well, he's gotta tell you how and what's next, right? You don't know, okay. So, I think that would be it, I think we would be good to do, if you want to, if you guys are fine with that, go on to the fence viewing, and then we can go back up to the others.
Sorry, though.
No, you're good, you're good.
Is that fine?
All right, that's fine.
Okay.
So, we're gonna move the, on the, uh, the agenda to fence viewing. Which we discussed briefly last week, didn't we not?
Yes.
And, uh.
Looks like it's statute twenty-nine two oh one, county commissioners as fence viewers, so.
Yeah. Did you get a chance to look over any?
I did, um, I mean, it's, it's not that commonly used in counties, I mean, a lot of counties do receive requests for that. The statute clearly allows you all to do that. Um, I think probably the biggest decision is whether you guys want to do it, or if you want a, a point of designee. If, if you want to do that, I mean, there's an application process, they have to apply to the clerk, uh, to have that.
So, what would their duty be? They would go out, they would say, yes, this fence is terrible, you don't have cows, you do, fix your fence, sir, is that, is that what they do?
You know, my, my advice historically has been, it's a, it's a civil issue, it's between two private parties, and I usually tell my clients that they probably don't want to get involved.
Well, and that was, I mean, that would be my question, is that there is state statute out there that, now, is that, are we mandated by that statute to, 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 uh, to do this? Or?
Well, I looked at that today, I didn't see a shawl.
Yeah.
It was, it was whether you wanted to, I, I think, I kind of get the feeling that maybe you guys do want to assist some of these people. If you want to, then I think we could come up with a, a fence viewing policy and make it a little easier, I mean, we have to have an application.
Yeah, I, I, I've worked out some, like, on fence viewing procedures, and I'm.
I did, I did see where Jefferson County, Kansas, you guys might have saw the same thing, I mean, I kind of looked, and they have a policy and a plan, and probably, once you do one or two, there won't be a lot, but, you know, my main thing is to make sure that the commission doesn't have any sort of liability, and, and there's some protection in that.
Right.
I want it back, we have that already.
So.
Who had that?
We do, Bourbon County. I handed it out several meetings ago. Before I worked here.
Two thousand five.
So, I think if you guys want to entertain that as commissioners, number one, probably a policy, which you guys are big fans of.
Yeah.
And an application, which it looks like you have, and then whether the commission wants to do it, a commissioner wants to do it, or two of you, or if you want to appoint a designee.
So, when they walk out there, Bob, what do they do? Does the commissioner or the designee?
I mean, I have, I have fence, but usually call your neighbor up and say, hey, let's fix the fence, I mean, it's.
It depends really on the complaint, because there are several complaints outlined in the, in the statute. It depends really on the complaint, because there are several complaints outlined in the, in the statute that they, that they can come forward and, and, and ask for fence viewers on. So if it's, you know, it's, whether it's construction of a new fence, or if it's the repair of an old fence.
Well, if it's the construction of a new fence, they certainly need a survey, because we're not going to tell them where their line's at.
Well, that's, I mean, that's it. You're, you're not going to tell them this is where to put it.
You don't get in border dispute, no.
There is Kansas fence law, you know, a lot of people don't know that. If farmers are here, they probably know that. There's very well-adopted Kansas fence law, you know. Historically, if, if I own one side and Susan owns the other side, and we agree to put a new fence up, we share in the cost. If I have cows and she doesn't, she's probably not going to want to pay for half the fence, because I'm putting the fence up to keep my cows in.
This is a fence in state?
Yeah.
This is a fence in state?
Yeah, so, I mean, you know, in the law, a lot of times people say, you know, don't reinvent the wheel. I'd probably look at Jefferson County and, and see how they do it.
And I looked at several counties, uh, and like I said, I got, uh, I got some stuff here that I can make copies and you guys can look at, and I'll hand them off to you before the end of the night, because with all that's been going on, I haven't had a chance to make copies of them, but, uh, it, it, it outlines pretty much from some other counties. There's not a whole lot of counties out there that have processes.
I've never, I've never advised anyone to do it, just because it could open you up to some liability, or, or quite frankly, it could get you sued even if it's not a viable lawsuit. You know, so you want to make sure that you have protection and coverage under K Camp.
And again, that's where I come down to, and that's what I, uh, the reason why I brought it up is because there have been people that have asked for it. So if, if we come up with the policy that we're not going to do it, then that's fine, because then that's the answer that you can give to these people, is that the policy of Bourbon County is that, you know, it is a dispute.
Go directly to the court.
Yeah, and to take it to the court, and not, you know, and not be involved in it, because it is an old, an old, uh, method.
Well, here's, here's what, here's what Jefferson County says. Disputes between adjoining landowners regarding the building or maintenance of a fence may have the fence in question viewed by the county commissioners, or it could be your designees. The commissioners acting as fence viewers view the fence and then assign to each party in writing an equal share of the fence to build, maintain, or repair.
Right.
It's kind of, you're kind of being the parent to two kids who can't get along.
Yeah.
So having said that, as commissioners, if we go out there, we meet in the middle, shake hands, whatever's to the right belongs to me, whatever's to his right, her right, belongs to them, and if they dispute that, am I within my right to say, we'll get a lawyer?
You can. I mean, I think, I think most fence disputes are probably more, hey, we need to replace the wire for, you know, the top...
Well, and I think there's a couple out here that is, that, that reached out that, that have no fence.
Yeah.
And they're wanting to, to, to have a fence. Here is, uh, let's see, what was it?
We're fence in, fence out.
And this was some of the decisions that we needed to make. If we act as a commission and we go out and view a fence, then it becomes appealable by state statute. They can, they can appeal the process. So then the, the, the litigations start beginning. You've got all this that you're going to have to keep fighting and going back and forth. If two commissioners are appointed to be fence viewers, their decisions are final, conclusive, non-applicable, and binding on all parties and future occupants of the land. If not appointed, the decision is a board decision and can be appealed under KSA nineteen dash two two three. So if we're going to do this, this is some of the questions that we need to ask. You know, are we wanting to, to assign people to be our designees and do it? Or do we want to assign two different commissioners to do it, or do we just not want to do it at all?
Well, if two of you go out right now, it'd be an open meeting.
Well, I mean, see, if you go out and then I could go in the next week and then we could come to the table.
I mean, that, that's the other part of the equation. Then you got to call it as a meeting, because it's still a court.
Why you have to go together? Who said it had to go together? Nobody said that. You could go at different times.
That's true. That's true.
What's that?
Jim and Clifton have gone out on fence viewings, and they said, if y'all want to come, here's where we'll be.
Right.
The precedence has been set for years.
Okay.
It's not like this is brand new.
Okay.
Well, it's certainly allowable.
Well, it's brand new to us. But thank you. I hear what you're saying.
And, and we, and we do have, we do have a, like I said, we do have a policy. We already have an application, so it's not like they hadn't been doing it. It's just new to us and, and it's a twenty-year-old, uh, policy right now, so...
I just don't want to mess it up. That's my thing. I want to make sure we do it right.
Mr. Walker, you had a comment?
Yes, I have. Funny to tell you, it's like my neighbor out there. They were building a fence, and I had to deal with them, nothing to hide, even to get to the county, because they were building next to the road. They requested the county come out to make sure they were building the fence when it wasn't in the county's right of way. Is that reasonable? And the county, three commissioners went out there and they said, yes, that, it's on Sycamore, which is where it's at. They built a beautiful fence, and it's not in the county's right of way. So that's something you might want to consider. Thank you.
Well, yeah.
When I did that, I got a survey, so...
Yeah, it's, I think, that's a good point, but I think that's a little different than the fence viewing between two neighbors. That's more like getting a hold of the Red Bridge guy and saying, make sure we're not in your right of way.
Like I said, I got several things here that I want to make copies of and share with you guys.
Yes, ma'am.
Is there something where you could have a checklist, if this, then this, if this, then this, if this, then this?
Yes, Bob, will you write that for us?
Sure, I'll get that out tonight.
Uh, like I said, I, I got copies of some stuff, and here is a fence viewers' checklist.
Do you want to know what K Camp's position is on it?
Yeah.
What'd you say, Susan?
K Camp's position on it.
Oh, yeah, that's a good point.
Yeah, because they would have to represent any...
So do we want to table this?
I can, um, I can email, um, I have a listserv that has every county counselor on an email in the state. I could put that out there and, and ask if, if anybody
Okay.
that does this has a policy, and we could see what else is out there.
Okay.
I mean, just for your own information, I could send that to you.
Let's talk about it on the seventeenth of August. Is that okay?
Okay. So we'll bring this back up again on the seventeenth of August.
Okay, yeah. So the termination of the juvenile detention.
Okay, so juvenile detention, uh, my understanding is that, uh, we missed the deadline to change that contract.
And if we don't terminate it now, we'll miss the deadline again.
Well, you have to do it, you have to do it by July first of next year.
Right, so, so if you're, if you're intending to do it.
Yeah, I mean...
I don't know why you wouldn't just draft a letter and get it done.
The only thing that I would say is your commission's going to change to five members, and so you might want to wait...
Well, if the three members agree, then it's already going to go ahead and happen, though.
I'm just, I'm just giving you, you know, a different thought. Since you're going to have five members instead of three, you could wait till January and have Susan put it on the list of unfinished stuff and take it up in January. I mean, if you want me to send a letter terminating it now, I can, it just, it'll be...
I, I, I mean, we're going to be, we're, we're stuck in twenty twenty-five.
Well, you're stuck, you're stuck in twenty-six, because you have to give notice before July first for the next budget year.
Okay, so for twenty twenty-seven, um, I'm, I'm pretty sure I'm ready to, yeah, I mean, that, that'd be, if we want to make a mo, make a motion to terminate, I, I would say that right now. I'll move that we terminate, uh, juvenile detention with Gerard Juvenile Detention Center for the twenty twenty-seven, uh, budget year.
Second.
Beer Bar?
Yes.
Milburn?
Yes.
Tran?
Yes.
All right, I'll prepare that letter probably for the chairman's signature.
Okay.
And, um, I'll send it to Susan.
I do have a question. Um, how do you anticipate budgeting for, um, that since it's an unknown number?
For, for the next, who we're going to go with?
Yeah, juvenile detention.
In twenty twenty-seven?
Well, it'd be part of twenty twenty-six, because you'll do the half part of, because their fiscal year's probably on a different rotation, I would assume.
Yeah, I don't know. I think...
Okay.
I thought they were on the same calendar year as we were, according to...
I don't know. With them asking, do...
I'll look at the, I think we...
Contract?
Yeah, but, uh, I'm pretty sure you have to give notice before July one for the next year.
For twenty-seven?
I think so.
Okay. Just something to keep in mind, how are you going to look at the cost?
My suggestion would be, what we're paying them is well over. We could go ahead and set that aside, and then at the end of the year, we would put that back in the fund. Unless there's a reason you think that one works.
No, I think it'd be fine. I would just keep it in your general fund.
Okay.
So then, was the other one camera? Was that the other issue that we were...
No, your zoning discussion.
Okay, so on the zoning, I put that on the agenda because we need to, we need to start thinking about moving forward. What are we going to do next?
Okay.
So I would just, I would say that, um...
What you do next is determined by statute.
Right.
You have to do it exactly as it said.
Yeah, I've talked, I actually talked to Micah and David, uh, today about that. Uh, David called me, Micah called me. I didn't talk to you Friday, but not about that. Um, and I also, I had an email with Susan on what the, um, zoning committee was called, because if you look at the statute, you, you had a zoning committee, but if you're going to adopt zoning, it looks pretty clear to me, uh, that you have to adopt or establish a planning commission, also known in most counties as a zoning board. And they would take what recommendation you have and have a, at least one public hearing, where people could come and tell them they like it, they don't like it, they like this, they don't like that. And then they would report back to you. And then I think you have to have a public hearing on the possible adoption after giving notice in the paper. And the hearing has to be twenty days after the first publication, I believe. I mean, I can get it all lined out. That's, I think that's right.
So if you...
So if you want to move forward, I think you need to think about establishing a planning commission, which would also kind of be your zoning board. Who you want to put on that. Um, I did not look up how many members it has to have. I, I think the...
Between five and nine.
I think, yeah, I was thinking five.
Minimum five.
So, um, I think in Allen County, they have seven. I don't think it really matters, so... I think your first step is establishing that planning commission, so we have the buzzwords right. In, in theory, you, you kind of have done that, but you had kind of this, um, feeler group, kind of a, a local group, see kind of what they thought, and it was meetings, but, uh, you didn't know at that time what they were going to, to ask for or recommend, so... I think if you take that formal action, uh, we could draw up a, a resolution to establish the, the planning commission, to start that. And then you could take action after you establish it by who you want to be on it.
We can go ahead and ask now for letters of interest to be sent?
I'd rather you make a resolution. I'd rather see a resolution and see what it said.
Yeah, that's, that's fine. We can do a resolution, and, I mean, obviously, this is an open meeting, so people will know. You know, if, if somebody's interested to be on it, I'm sure they'd get a hold of you maybe, or you guys could reach out to people and see. I mean, you're not going to appoint anybody to it until we establish the entity.
And in your resolution, you could, you could put some stipulations of how you want to do it and how you want to go about it.
So you want to do a working group to put this together?
Oh, Bob can write a resolution, and then we can look at it, and then we can vote to approve it if...
I can, I can put a resolution, a proposed resolution together and email it to you this week.
Okay.
And, um, Susan, you three, and everybody can take a look and see. I mean, um, I don't think it's that difficult. It does need to have the right word in it.
Yeah.
Right wording in it, um, so...
So it's a resolution to form a zoning board?
I think it's called a planning commission, is actually what it's called, but, I mean, Allen County did theirs in seventy-seven, and they called it the zoning board. Now it's called a planning commission.
And from what I understand, that resolution to form the planning commission does not mean you're zoned. It means that you're, you're moving in that direction
Yeah.
and going to listen to what they bring to you.
Yeah.
Because you already listened to see the temperature of the county, is what you did with your exploratory group, I think, is what it was.
You're not going to...
And now you want to
Yeah, sorry, go ahead.
Put together your planning commission to see.
Okay.
The formation of the planning commission is just a step to get to zoning. The ultimate decision, if you're going to be zoned, is your decision.
Yeah.
And there's just, you know, like a lot of things in the law, there's just some steps we have to take, so...
All right, well then...
And I think we want to do it right, because it's probably not, it might be kind of a hot potato.
Okay. So when would you have this resolution?
I'll have it to you this week.
Okay, so...
And I'll, let's see what's, I'll be here, I'll be here in two weeks, the first meeting in August.
So you want to go, uh, let's do it on that date, then?
Twenty...
I'm sorry, what?
August, first, first Monday of August.
Oh, the eighth.
August.
No, it's not the eighth.
August fourth.
Fourth, I think, or, yeah, August first, Friday.
So is that our next meeting?
Yeah.
You have one next Monday?
We have one on the twenty-eighth of July. Okay.
So I'll get some information on the, um, fence viewing from the listserv, do the letter on the juvenile detention, and do the resolution on the planning commission.
Okay. I think that's all we had for you.
If something else does come up, just call my phone. I'll do it, babe.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you all.
Thank you.
Bye, Bob. See y'all.
So now, we had put after IT, uh, bill, billing and contracts.
Mm-hmm.
We had put public works safety audit. You had asked that to be a correction to the amendment.
Let me get these. Can I get...
You want to write some notes?
Yeah.
Okay, we're going to take a recess for five minutes.
Thanks, David.
We didn't wear the same shirt.
You know what, Brad is waiting for nine one one, so since we're moving things up for Bob, I see Brad's still out there. We ought to move that up, too. This one, what a jumbled mess. Now my things are getting mixed up. Oh, goodness. When did, when did they say they were going to bring that fence view back?
Uh, eight seventeen.
Oh, eight seventeen, okay.
I would assume the attorney general's going to put out something. I can get it redlined from the reviser's office. He's been working on some other things for me.
We got grandkids and we still can't have her. I asked her, you know, my wife, even, we got spare bed lanes, and it was just cramming for this two-year-old. And I said, are you sure we still don't have kids? And I said, are you sure we still don't have kids?
This chair always gets me.
Oh, my goodness.
Okay, I'm ready.
You're ready?
Yeah, sorry.
That's quite all right. All right, we'll return to session. So we are on Public Works Safety Audit. I talked with Dr. Cohen, and he is, he has somebody, and so then you sent out a, an email, so you want to present that?
Oh, it's yours, you may, if you'd like, but he did that for you, I think he went.
I didn't print it, so.
Oh, I gave you a copy.
Oh, did you?
I went and printed copies at the beginning of the meeting.
Well, and you have a copy of it too?
Yeah, I gave, I printed one for him.
Okay.
Here, here you go, you can use my copy.
I thought that was part of the. Is that, is that still, is that still not working?
Public Works Audit.
Can you hear now? Yeah. Can't hear now?
Well, they're not listening to it on the video, they're, we're just not loud enough.
Just don't even, okay, so you need me to be louder?
Yeah.
All right, I thought this also amplified, I'm just, anyway. Commissioner Milburn. I'm not sure, House of Bennett, Organizational Development Solutions, they have made an offer to do a invest, or a audit of our safety issues at Public Works, I mean, I'm, I'm not gonna read the whole thing. Dr. Cohen, our HR director, has also putting together an HR, so I guess we would have to decide which one, or if we want to use both, or what, and I I would prefer to have him here to, to talk about it, uh, what he's got in mind, and.
How did, how did House of Bennett get ahold of us?
No, he, I think, did you reach out to him and, and show interest in?
Who, this guy?
Yes.
No.
No, Dr. Cohen.
Dr. Cohen.
So he, he, he found that place for you.
Oh, this is his?
Yes.
Oh, okay, I thought.
He presented that, yeah, that's his.
Well, I didn't get that from him, I got it from you.
Well.
Okay, so, now that's one in the same, so now I'm not confused. And you got your copy?
I have it somewhere, I'm trying to find it, because it's. Because there was three copies that came up today.
So.
I know. Just to clarify, I sent it to you all.
Right, it was, it was a text message, all right. We'll give credit.
You're welcome.
Uh, okay, so.
So it came from you?
It came from Dr. Cohen.
You want me to take, do you want me to go ahead and take the?
Go ahead.
On this one, okay, so Commissioner Beerbauer had reached out to our HR, Dr. Cohen, and showed some interest in having a safety audit, uh, just to clear things up, make sure we were up to speed, up to compliance, doing things like industry standard, and for almost, since at least a couple of weeks, I think Dr. Cohen has been looking for somebody, a company to come in and, and do this for us, and he found a very reasonable bid, fifteen hundred to two thousand dollars. Uh, it'll be a two-day project, one day for an onsite visit and one day for the report and development, so, that is what this is.
And I remember this now, because this gentleman's manager for Lee Summit Water Utility.
Yeah.
And when I talked to Dr. Cohen, he did mention that, so this, this is the guy he's been waiting on.
Yep.
Okay.
So you guys can decide if you want to hire that person to do this audit or not.
So just to get it on the record, what Dom's gonna do, I think it's Dom, um, Dom Bennett. So basically, what they're gonna do is analyze existing incident reports and safety records, interviewing staff to gather frontline perspectives, identifying the root cause of accidents and safety concerns, develop practical, evidence-based safety recommendations, delivering a comprehensive written report detailing findings and proposed actions.
Just a second, I was talking to the audience.
Oh, so, yeah, that's, that's all I have.
Okay.
And from my understanding, he would write a report to say, you know, you're in compliance, you're doing a good job here, maybe you could do better here, or do better everywhere, whatever, whatever they do.
And having, having spent three hours with Public Works last week, talking to everybody there, um, I know that they have their, their safety program, and, and I, and I commend them on that, but I think having a third-party exterior come in and look at your operations is not a bad thing. So I don't want the people at Public Works to think that this is a gotcha moment, because this is not a gotcha moment. This is, from my perspective, I need to make sure that, as Commissioner, that you guys are safe and you're taken care of, and you have your PPE. Work is one thing, but you have to have a safe work environment, so please do not think that it's a gotcha moment, that you guys are doing anything wrong, because I personally did not see that, okay, so.
I would agree.
Does K-Works offer this as well?
They're a work comp carrier, might be for free.
That's a good question.
K-Works has helped them put together a committee, a safety committee, I know that.
They didn't help them put the committee together, they said you can get discounts if you put together a committee. So they can do audits for us.
Beginning of our safety journey, right?
Yeah, they can do audits, and that can be requested. That would be my only thing that you might ask, if that's an opportunity as well.
Table this until next week and give them an opportunity to reach out to K-Works.
Who's they?
They're our work comp carrier.
No, 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 who's they reach out to?
Our director and Dr. Cohen.
Okay. Would you be willing to do that? Reach out to K-Works this week and see if they can do an audit for us?
Sure, yeah, no problem.
All right.
And does MSHA come into this at all? I mean, does this guy have any, does he have any experience with MSHA?
Is this just OSHA, or is it MSHA?
We're not subject to OSHA.
Why not?
We aren't, as a government entity, we're not subject to OSHA, now, we follow a lot of their standards. Yeah.
So, so KDR and MSHA, and MSHA will be, they should be in any time, but.
Talk to Dr. Cohen, see if he can help us on that. Appreciate it.
I'm just trying to, opportunities.
Is that good for everybody?
Yeah.
So we'll table this till next week?
Yep.
And that's the twenty-seventh?
Twenty-eighth.
Oh, twenty-eight, thank you.
Okay.
Oh, okay. Are you sure, Michael? What do you want in the minute?
That I passed.
Oh, Michael. I'll get it.
All right, next up is
He had no words.
Hospital, hospital equipment, I didn't get that in there.
It's in, it's in there, isn't it?
Yeah, it's in.
Yeah, it's.
It's, I mean, it's in there, I didn't, I didn't get it in the order.
Oh, okay.
I, I talked with the gentleman that is doing the, with Global, and I think you talked with him as well, he said.
Yeah, I called him.
Uh, and, yeah, so did I, and they are working up to be down this week, he's supposed to give me an answer by tomorrow as to when they're gonna have that stuff out of that building.
Okay, so we'll have, he'll have an auction date?
Yeah.
Next week?
So next week, I should have some information as to where we're moving forward on it, and, you know, I'm not gonna, this was one of those things that kind of slipped through the crack with the resignations of other commissioners, so we're not gonna continue to do this.
Yeah.
You know, very much longer, if they don't do something by next week, then I think.
They've been hired for a long time.
Do something else, we'll do something else, I mean, uh, that's, that's my view on it, so.
Okay. Do you have a contract on that? Uh, did you get a contract on that?
I don't think we got any.
We do have a contract.
Will you send that to all of us also? Because, boy, I'd hate to see him, we, us contract with them, but then us has to store it for two years, sitting in their contract, waiting on them to do something, so.
I guess, uh.
I can't remember who the company is.
Former Chairman Wyatt Wisenhut did sign an agreement with them.
Yes.
Yeah, so.
And you want that on the next agenda?
Yeah, twenty.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, so Freeman Letter of Support, I'm not sure what, what we got there.
Oh, can, actually, Mr. Beerbauer, can we, um, can we jump on over to the nine-one-one, because I know Brad's waiting here for that.
Okay, yeah, we can move ahead on that.
And we did that for Bob there, so.
Yeah, so. Is he out there? Yeah, here they come.
We don't think everybody should have to be here all night if they don't want to be.
Good evening, thank you for having me, uh, name's Brad Matkin, City Manager, City of Fort Scott. Want to talk a little bit about our E-nine-one-one Community Dispatch Services. I sent you an email yesterday with this attached. As some of you are aware, the City of Fort Scott has been providing Bourbon County with the E-nine-one Communication Dispatch Services for the last several years. Some facts, city receives fifty-seven percent of the calls, while a county has forty-three percent of the calls, as average is over a three-year period. City receives an E-nine-one-one phone tax, which can only be used on certain things, roughly around ninety thousand per year. County pays the City of Fort Scott fifty thousand per year for this service. City pays for all wages, benefits, training, upgrades to the department, not to name other items from the budget. After some discussion, I feel it is time for the Bourbon County Sheriff's Department to take over this service, so it would be considered a Bourbon County E-nine-one-one Communications Department. I have talked to Sheriff Bill Martin and Baker Tilly's rep, Ben Hart, about this, and they are confident it can be done financially starting in twenty-twenty-six. What would Bourbon County receive? It would receive a complete turnkey E-nine-one-one Communications Operation Department, with a dedicated eight-member team, as well as a full room of equipment operating and ready to go. They would also receive three hundred and fifty thousand dollars per year from the City of Fort Scott for the city's share of the department in twenty-twenty-six and twenty-twenty-seven. We would like to see this adjusted in twenty-twenty-eight, if the county's financials would, would bear that. County would keep the fifty thousand dollars they have been paying the City of Fort Scott. County would also receive the E-nine-one-one phone tax, roughly ninety thousand, as we said, but it can only be used for certain areas of the department. So in light, Ben can go, this county would need the budget, eighty to a hundred thousand, possibly not that much for this department. The, one thing to remember, this department is absolutely vital to our county as a whole, and it makes complete sense for the Sheriff's Department to manage the department and eventually grow it into its own entity. I look forward to talking to you tonight about this, and if you guys have anything to say, you sure can.
I just want to run those numbers, if you don't mind, what do?
What do you mean by adjust?
Adjust? Well, right now, we're paying a lot more than our percentage, because we're paying fi, over five hundred thousand dollars. So, once we get to where you get comfortable, hopefully you will, I hope the, the three of you will make the numbers work at the county, maybe we can adjust it to where we are just paying our half, our share.
Can we run those?
So do you know, I mean, overall cost of, of the nine-one-one, I mean, not counting what you pay or what we pay, but what, what is their expenditures for the year?
Including benefits, please.
Five, five-twenty?
Five-fifty.
Five-fifty.
Five-fifty, that's including the benefits.
That's everything.
And all the IT and everything that goes into them?
Everything that goes into them to run them is, is the five hundred fifty thousand, that's their entire budget.
I would say that it'll be higher on our side because of benefits, our benefits are a little bit richer. So, um, and, and I'm speaking from a financial perspective on this. One thing that I would, I know that you guys have offered to pay money, but I feel like that that is taxing the I'm taxing the community twice, because Bourbon, everybody in Bourbon County gets Bourbon County tax. The people in the City of Fort Scott will pay Bourbon County tax and the City of Fort Scott tax, so.
She makes a good point, the, this has been coming on for several years. I just couldn't see, when I first started as City Manager, I could not see coming over here when I could see the, the financials going down and saying, hey, we need two hundred and fifty thousand for your share. It'd be like stealing from Peter to pay Paul. I'm a taxpayer also, so she makes a good point, a city, a city resident is basically being taxed.
I mean, they're gonna be taxed for the full amount. Would you agree, Ben? They'll be attacked, they'll be taxed for the full amount regardless, because you're gonna tax on both sides.
One, one way or the other.
It's, it, it spreads it, it spreads the expense more fairly if it's a county tax. Because of, it's about fifty-fifty, right?
Forty-seven, uh, fifty-seven, forty-three.
Forty, yeah, forty-three, fifty-seven.
The city has fifty-seven.
Yes.
But are, are some of those calls, third car, call ambulance out?
Yes.
Which is ours.
So.
So it, it, is that included in those numbers?
Yes.
And then you said, I mean, the other thing that you said in your introduction here was, uh, okay, so twenty-twenty-six, twenty-twenty-seven, you guys are willing to, to still pay the, uh, the bulk of what you've been paying. And then in twenty-twenty-eight, we're adjusting, but we're hoping to look at maybe them becoming their own entity.
That would be up to Sheriff Martin.
Yeah.
I will tell you, Lou Howard, who's here, has done a great job with her team. They're very dedicated.
Right.
They work a lot of hours, they do what needs to be done for our community, they're here when it storms, they're here whenever they need to, to help each other, so, and to stand alone, they're almost standing alone right now, really.
Yeah, well, that's what I'm kind of getting at, is if, if it was a standalone deal, then the city would pay and the county would pay. And, you know, so we're, we're right back to the same thing anyway.
Because it would be a county-wide function, so it would just be a county-wide tax.
What's a?
You wouldn't, city or county wouldn't have to pay into it.
What's fifty-seven percent? Have you worked out that number?
Oh, they become a taxing entity.
But are you suggesting we just pay for all of it, or are we adding a tax or something?
It's a, it's a levy.
Yeah, they would become a taxing entity, just like the rural fire did.
They're a taxing, taxing levy, so we, no one would pay into it, except for the taxpayers.
So it would just be additional to.
I like the way that, that, that it's set up, I mean, because I think even before they started on their own, and I don't know if she would be willing to take over and just run the whole thing now, payroll and all, uh, or if she would want the sheriffs to, you know.
I, I think with proper guidance, it would be okay.
I, I think with proper guidance, it would be okay.
I, I, I would give her utmost confidence.
Okay.
Who's doing that now? Who's doing the paperwork?
Who does the payroll?
We do all that.
The city does.
City does, yes.
But you turn in all the timesheets and everything like that, right? Yeah, so you're halfway there anyway. It'd just be somebody helping her out with her, with her budget. And I, I would say that coming under the sheriff's umbrella would give her, give her a good deal. I'm.
It's her own entity, which benefits would be required.
County or order?
Yeah, okay. Wait a minute.
I think there's a, I think this could be a work session in itself, to be quite honest.
I, I, at the, at the risk of looking really dumb, I am really confused here, because I thought the city was, you're paying for most of it, or do you have a tax levy on it right now?
We pay for it all right now.
Paying for it out of your.
We pay for it all.
And then our fifty thousand comes out of general, so we're, who talked about this levy? I don't, didn't hear that.
That's something, that's something different. That would be if they, once they, he said in his introduction that he was, uh, he would like to see them, you know, go, become their own entity. That's what this is, that, that's what it leads to.
So, we're going to have to raise Bourbon County's mill levy to cover this and not take money from Fort Scott? Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Or it's still going to be a county budget item and a Fort Scott city budget, budget item regardless. So, it's, it's coming out of taxes, one way or the other.
We're wanting to give it its own budget line item instead of throwing it in somewhere. Is that what you guys were talking about with that levy?
Or, or having them become like the rural fire department and be their own, uh, tax levy and they.
Yeah, they could do that, too.
Would they be under the Bourbon County Commission, or would they just be on their own and have their own board, or what are you, what are you saying?
I would need to research that.
But that is a work session thing, so do we want to do a, do a work session? Uh, uh, and, okay, so we've got audience members that are raising their hand. We'll start.
Hang on.
Yeah, because we're gonna.
Mr. Tran has a got to.
I'm letting you guys talk, so.
Yeah, we, we didn't do that right.
One item, though, is you are gonna have to, we're gonna have to make a decision, because it is budget season.
Right.
That's why we bring it now, so we know what's going to happen with our budgets.
Yeah.
So, right now, with all the money that they're giving us, according to this letter, it's four ninety. We're still in deficit of sixty. If it costs five-fifty to run this, this gig, we're in a deficit of, of, of sixty grand, okay? Um, our portion of we, if we keep getting this, our portion of the bill's going to be two thirty-six, as long as they give us the three fifty. If they don't give us the three fifty, then we're gonna eat the whole bill.
I know, yeah. That, that, Greg.
What about it? Right now, the, the budget is fifty thousand, so whatever you do, it's going to be more than that.
Did we even put our projected mill high enough to the sixty-two-five?
The mill was a hundred and thirty-eight thousand.
I mean, we can't go over what we declared. And so what I'm asking is, did we even set aside enough to do this?
This, this is coming out of left field, and we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to, if we take it on this year.
We should have had this conversation before that, before we set that sixty-two-five last week.
We, we had a conversation based upon the information that was provided to us. This is coming out of left field, okay? So, this is something new, either we, either we, we grab it and bring it in to this year, or we push off until next year. My suggestion on this is like, everybody wants to have a work session, that's great, I, I'll do what the, the majority states. But in my head, this needs to be, this needs to be an idea that we, we germinate and execute next year, if we decide to do it. Because this is a lot, five-fifty.
I mean, I talked about it about three meetings in a row, because I was thinking it was going to come up in some way, shape, or form. So, I wasn't ignorant to the fact that Bourbon County by statute is supposed to be carrying this. Uh, I just didn't know that it was going to actually come right now. And we already declared from fifty-nine-nine to sixty-two-five, and I don't know that that covers it. We'll have to cut something else to, to carry nine-on-one.
If the sheriff, do you have the money to cover this, sir? I, I'm not privy to your budget right now.
There will be some adjustments that'll have to be made, but it possibly could be worked out.
Right.
In your twenty-twenty-six budget?
That's right. Part of the twenty-sixth budget. In twenty-sixth budget, right, not twenty-five, right?
Mr. Matlin raises his hand.
Yeah, that's, that's an option, if the sheriff adjusts his budget to, to fit. But absent that, you can't, you, you don't have enough room.
In the sixty-two-five.
In twenty-twenty-six, it would have to be a January one, twenty-twenty-seven.
So, we're pushing off a full year?
Cause, a year and a half, because we already declared.
Right.
It, there's, cause that's over four mill, that's just not doable.
So, may I ask, what's the biggest driving factor for relinquishing, relinquishing the nine-one-one?
I understand the logic.
To get what we, uh, that will help our budget.
I understand the logic.
Yeah. So, all right.
I mean, that.
So, what you're saying is you're trying to, you're trying to release the debt?
I mean, there's a couple of things. You got debt.
Right.
Plus, you got what we talked about earlier with the IT.
Right, right.
And plus, being under the sheriff's realm.
So, the law.
So, will you have to have the full two hundred and eighty-six thousand that you requested in order for that to fit?
Next year? Yeah.
When we typed in everybody's budget to the budget worksheet?
No, I understand, I understand the levy part of it. What I'm not understanding is how you're going to get four mills out of what we just offered. I don't understand why the levy would have to go up four mills to get this deal done. That I don't understand, I'm completely lost.
Eighty thousand's not four mills?
I know.
No.
The only, and, and you're correct. The deficit within the function that the sheriff would have to absorb any wood is the sixty thousand. That's the only thing you have to absorb for twenty-six and twenty-seven. That is not four mills.
In the additional cost of insurance.
That's not even close to a mill.
Not even a half mill.
In, in the additional cost of insurance, because we pay better on insurance than they do.
Is that four mills, that four hundred thousand?
I don't know what it is. I have, I don't have the numbers.
I'm just trying to get to the four mills.
I don't have the numbers to run it, I didn't say four mills.
That's, my, my thing is, look, I understand what you guys want to do, and I'm willing to listen. I just need numbers. Good numbers. This is, this is a beginning, but I really need good numbers.
Yeah.
It's like, I need to know what their pay is versus the benefits, I need the whole package on that. As you're saying, the, the one number that's concrete right now is five-fifty.
It, it, that's, that's what they're, not quite. That's, that's what their twenty-sixth budget right now, that's in, that's going into workshop.
Yes, sir.
Uh, here in about a month. That, that's what that budget is, is, is around five-fifty, five-forty-seven. That includes, that includes salaries and everything else, some of which i- is already in the sheriff's budget that could cross over. So, a, at a worst, it, in my mind, without, without, setting aside the county's, uh, insurance and, and benefits, setting that aside from the city's perspective, the eighty to a hundred thousand is probably the max the sheriffs would have to cover. It's probably going to be less than that. Now, again, I'm saying, setting aside the insurance for the county.
Did you put in a larger budget request than what your budget was last year, though?
Yeah, you did, we did.
And, so?
And the reason, the reason was that there's some revenue that he's realizing now.
Okay.
That hadn't been realized in the future, in the past. In fact, it's coming, it's coming through this year. Reimbursement housing, it's coming through to the sheriff's, uh, Fund One Twenty, i- is higher than what it's probably ever been. But it's coming through, so we've got a budget for some of those funds that come through. And that's one of the reasons. So, we just took another look at the revenue, and then matched the expenses up with the revenue that, that made sense.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, you would intend to use that revenue?
To cover this.
To cover nine-one-one?
If there wasn't other sacrifices you see Will was willing to make, yeah.
I'm sorry, what?
If, if, if there wasn't other sacrifices to be made or offsets, then to cover the sixty thousand, then that's why we do it. E-nine-one-one is a completely separate fund itself, and is, I think Susan would tell you, it's a fund that would actually be set up by itself. And that's.
It can only be used for very specific.
Very specific circumstances, yeah.
Very much of anything else.
You're talking about the, the phone tax?
Yeah, phone tax. Right, and it's governed by statute.
Yeah.
The only other thing that, like, when we took EMS back over to the county, to, to keep the employees whole, we also took all their accruals, their benefits, all, like, as their vacation, that's it. So, you would want to keep your employees whole. So, whatever they have over in the city, you want to bring over to the county and say, okay, we're going to book that as a special. This is what they have, and you give them so long to use their accruals. City has a different policy than the county. We have a use it or lose it, they can carry over. So, it's.
How much can they carry over?
Oh, I can't tell you the exact number, a hundred and so hours.
Yeah, there's a cap, but it's more than a hour's.
So, those are, those are the conversations. That's why I'm saying a work session would make more sense, so that we can really work through a lot of those things. Buy them out, so they would just fall into our policy the way it came?
We'd have to look at our budget then. If we're given three hundred and fifty thousand, we'd have to look at the.
What that offset is.
Offset, yeah. I mean, I'm not sure if we can.
There's just details we'd have to work out, you're right.
How much, how much of, how much of your budget would you have to shift? Cause I mean, we're talking about vehicle rentals and, or leasing and all that other stuff.
I'd have to say, talk to Ben and go through all the fine details.
So, you could bring those numbers to the work session, that's correct.
So, I'm sorry, is, is the city going to pay fifty thousand or three hundred?
Three hundred and fifty.
Three hundred and fifty thousand.
So, that's where the.
Four mill. He thought that we were taking it all.
For two years.
For two years.
And we would do, I mean, we may do it longer if, if, if we're not seeing a steady climb here. I mean, that's the reason I haven't come over here before now, is, you know. I don't want to try to steal from an empty pond. It's not, and not to knock any of you, because you're fighting the hell of a battle. But, you know, we've got to do what we've got to do, too. I mean, we're paying five hundred and fifty thousand, and forty-three percent of that is going towards the county for services. So, we need, you know, to pay more and to do that, we're going to have to keep doing what we've got to do.
Yeah, we definitely aren't paying our share.
Yeah, I agree there. Okay.
That's why, which what Mr. Tran said. I mean, you said what, sixty?
Sixty, deficit right now, sixty.
So, I mean, that's a heck of a lot better than two hundred and fifty.
Yeah.
Back in after numbers, right?
Yeah, you're right.
Cause right now, if we pulled our, out of the five-fifty, we pull our forty-three percent out, they would pay three, three thirteen, and we were paying like two sixty-something. So.
And you said it's five-fifty?
That's, that's the swag they gave us.
Yeah, you had an estimated max, right?
So, so we will pay two hundred thousand. We'll pay two hundred thousand.
Right, around that.
And we're paying fifty thousand right now, so where do we get eighty? Oh, because the thumbtacks, we're taking ninety of that.
Exactly.
So.
Again, that's, that's not counting any kind of transition of insurance or any kind of accumulated benefits that would transition over.
Eighty really doesn't benefit you, except for if you have a console go down or something like that.
Just take the eighty thousand, just forget the eighty.
Yeah, don't even, don't even.
Don't even put that in there.
So, we need to fund an extra hundred and fifty thousand towards this, plus some benefits.
Certainly.
Cause that, E-nine-one cannot go towards wages, cannot go towards benefits.
That's right.
Can't go towards uniforms, it can't go towards anything related.
That's right.
It can't even buy me a radio.
Right.
Okay? It's just, if they need dispatch, needs a chair.
Yeah.
That's where it comes out of.
That's right.
It can only pay for like a certain percentage of your record keeping and things like that.
What'd you say, a hundred, you said a hundred and fifty thousand to add to it?
Yeah, we'll have to add a hundred, because we'll get my, fifty thousand. Or the agreements for fifty thousand.
So, we do that, if just our portion of the bill plus that hundred and fifty thousand, we come out to like three eighty-six.
Well. Um, if I may, to calm it down, you've come very well with, hey, you guys, twenty-twenty-eight, and we've got the sheriff taking a portion, too, so I think, uh, you're in a good place to have some really good discussions. They are willing to help, and yes, and everybody recognizes, we're not paying our portion, but it sounds like you've got time, so no need to panic or anything like that. But, um, I think it's good that we have them here bringing it, and they're understanding their financial situations, yes.
I think we set, we set a time for a work session.
I don't think we have a choice. I don't think we have to be willing. I think by statute, it's ours, and they're giving it back. So, we have to, if we have to divert or find a way to, um, to. We've already, we've already proclaimed our mill, we cannot go over it. We were going to try to work to get it down, now we might not get it down.
There's a way that we can find it, so discuss it with you offline.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Let's have a, a work session about what we're going to do.
Yeah, that's what I said, let's, let's, what kind of date are you, I mean, can you?
When's our budget, first budget workshop start?
It's like next week.
No, it's first week in August, full, first full week in August is the first one. Yeah, it's two weeks away.
You want Greg working on this?
I would ra, I would rather.
So, August sixth is the first one.
Say a little work session with our budget advisor.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Then, and then they can really kind of hash it out. Bankers and accountants, they'd be a lot easier to talk to than we are.
I mean, they're already in the process, I want to keep them in the process.
Right. I think that might even be a better deal, too, is just have them guys.
Workshop with them, with the budget committee, yeah.
Kind of see where we're going.
Yeah.
Please keep in mind, we're not asking for five-fifty.
We know that.
I don't want to see you guys go any further. So, don't, please don't realize that.
No, we appreciate, I mean. I understand, I understand your position, and, and, and. I'm glad you're, 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 you know, not just like saying here. And then, you know, put the baby on the doorstep and then walk off.
I've got to live here, too. I'm, I gotta live here, too, I'm not going to do that.
So, I appreciate that, and so, I'm going to just say, we, we'll have our, our team get with you guys, and let's, let's see what we can do to make this work.
That'll give the sheriff an opportunity to talk about details about what goes into the dispatch.
Right.
And, and some of the numbers as we walk through it, what the city's used to, what he's used to, see what that fares out.
Oh, I'll let you know about the insurance, because we did change last year by giving, we ate all the insurance increase last year, and it was like twelve percent.
Yeah, it was big.
So.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, what day did you come up with?
I, I don't know, Greg, you got a.
Greg's our chairman, if you can.
Got for the people to think about, so.
Yeah.
Please work through the sheriff.
Can you guys work it out and then call the sheriff and?
Sure. Typically, our meetings have been four-thirty on Wednesdays.
We need to do the thirtieth.
July thirtieth or four-thirty? I will let you know, Sheriff. Thank you.
Of course.
All right.
Got to give, got to give us more affirmation, too. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Appreciate you. Thanks for moving me up.
Yeah. All right, so. Back up to the top here, an old business, and I think we have one thing left, and that is Freeman.
You have two things.
Two things, what's the other thing?
Uh, Commissioner Liaison.
Oh, yeah. Don't want to, don't want to miss that. So, what's your, what, what do you got with Freeman there, Commissioner Milburn?
Let me, give me a moment to catch up, I just, uh, that was Brad. Okay. So, we're back in order again?
Yeah, I think, I think we are.
Okay. Last week, Greg spoke about you signing a letter of support to Freeman. We didn't talk about it at the table, um, but it was a recommendation.
It wasn't, yeah, okay, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Did they draft your letter, or do we need to make one?
I already took care of it.
Oh, you did?
It was a letter, uh, of support to the federal government, yes.
Okay. So, I, we didn't make a motion to, uh, to do that. Did, would you like us to, or are you just going to sign in a letter as Commissioner Bearbauer?
Yeah, they, well, it was a chairman thing, uh, because that's why, that's what, what the approach was, was to the chairman. Yeah, they, well, it was a chairman thing, uh, cause that's why, that's what, what the approach was, was to the chairman. But also Freeman was one of the things that was assigned to me.
Gotcha.
After, uh, Commissioner Kruger resigned. So, uh, that's where we're at. Also, I mean, while we're on Freeman, uh, I did get notified by the advisory committee that they're satisfied with the expenditures from Freeman and that. Uh, so we, we need to discuss the release of cell tax money to Freeman.
I release it every month.
There's three hundred some thousand that I was told it's.
No, that is not true.
Okay. Can you send me, uh, a, uh, your?
Where did that information come from?
Well, from, from the committee. Not, not the, not the board, not, not, not the board, but the citizens committee. Can you just give me a breakdown of the monthly payments that you've been making?
It looks like they're on the thing that we get emailed.
Yeah, it's on the accounts payable.
There's only sixty-one thousand dollars, eight hundred and fifty-five dollars in our unencumbered cash and that was probably released in this last, in, in July's payment, because this is June thirtieth's financials. So there's not, we've, we've dispersed three hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars.
Total. Okay.
So.
The advisory committee was.
A little.
A little behind.
Little behind, yeah.
Is.
No worries.
Nobody called me.
The advisory committee been calling?
No.
Okay. Well, I, I, I. Me and you need to, I guess me and you need to have a conversation because I'm that liaison with them, so then I, that way I got the numbers right so that I follow along.
It comes through your payables.
Yeah.
Every month. We don't get sales tax until the twenty-fifth and as soon as we get it, we release it.
Okay.
So.
All right. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Sure.
Uh, so then now, Commissioner Tran.
All righty, thank you. So I'm using my phone because.
Well, yeah, yeah.
It, I have the document on my phone. It's in your inbox. Well, it, it, it should be in your, I sent it to, to the clerk and there's.
Oh, she printed it. I, I handed you one.
I, I.
Well, she gave me one and I went and copied them and I put them over there for you guys.
Well, then it's not, it's not her fault. It's going to be my.
My.
It, it doesn't matter.
Well, I didn't hand it to you, but it's, it's over there.
Yeah. But I'll just read it here. I already got it out, so. Um, this comes from Dr. Cohen's recommendation, um, because he's been monitoring our progress. And so I drafted up and it, uh, it's a letter to you guys. To Bourbon County Commissioners from myself, uh, subject commissioner liaison. Fellow Commissioners, currently this governing body acts as a generalist in our focus on the various aspects of governance. We each must maintain awareness of all aspects of the departments, sub-departments and functions of the county. As you are aware, maintaining the pulse of the county government is a daunting task and oftentimes we find ourselves stretched thin or outside our area of expertise. Therefore, I would like to propose, uh, we each are assigned a specific function of the county in order to focus our respective energy, time and effort into improving these functions. There are three major functions within the county and those are public works, public safety, emergency management and rural fire courthouse and all ancillary functions housed within. So to clarify, it's public works, public safety and the other two parts and then courthouse, okay? I propose we each take one of these functions and liaise with them to better understand their functions, requirements, limitations and present their voices, views and concerns at the commissioner's table. Commissioners will be granted, uh, permission to address specific matters that pertain to their area of responsibility without the necessity to consult other, the other two commissioners unless the matter is highly controversial or so critical that it demands the attention of the full commission, such as boarding, off, onboarding, offboarding, manning increases, budget increases, shortfalls or critical, uh, personnel issues. Where personnels are concerned, employees will engage human resources, HR first, and if needed, HR will engage the departments, uh, will engage the department's commissioner liaison. Um, that commissioner will be the arbiter of any disputes between the employee and their supervisors. The full commission will be the next level of appeal if required. I must correct that because I wrote this, um, I wrote this a, a while back. On that one there, I, my expectation is employees must first engage their team leads, then their supervisors and then HR. And, and you need to follow chain of command, so I, I, I will, uh, re-vector and correct that. Commissioner liaison would be authorized to spend up to one thousand dollars per month without the approval of the full commission. If spending, if spending above the specified amount is needed, then the liaison must seek approval from the full board at a regular meeting. Commissioner liaisons will report to the full board on issues of their respective department on a monthly basis and/or when liaisons feel compelled due to the nature of the issue. This proposal would not preclude any commissioner from involving themselves with any of the three functions listed, but would effect you, uh, effectively place a particular commissioner as the focal point for the function. This would allow us to become more knowledgeable about the areas we have been assigned. As always, I'm open to discussing this matter and look forward to hearing from all points of view and concerns. Thank you. So basically. I was at public works for three hours last Thursday. I got an earful. Um, I have, I have not been able to draft that report to you guys and, and, um. They were very professional. They were very, um, concerned about what's happening in their respective, uh, department. I thought that we'd have, I didn't get the full brunt of it and where, where I walked away thinking that we had gloom and doom. Do we have issues? Yeah, pay was one of them. Benefits was huge. The perks with the, um, the removing the perks, the landfill, that was, that, that conversation went for a while. Um, but all in all, when I, when I left there, everybody wanted to do a good job. Everybody, um, felt like, that, that they mattered, but. How they mattered was, was in question, meaning some people, I, I took it away. Some people felt like it was, you know, it was a really good job. Other people felt like, well, it's what I need to do, you know what I'm saying? And it is what it is, but then Sunday, I rode around with Mr. Bailey for five hours. And he showed me this county and wow. Wow. We, that five fifty is nothing compared to what we are on the hook for. When he showed me a bridge and he said, that's a million dollars. That did not look like a million dollar bridge. And I'll be honest with you, I, I, I don't know how many bridges. We, we, one bridge after another, after another. And the fact that he's got to go through and on the leeward side of any creek, any river, it's completely dammed up. It's a loggerhead. It's a bunch of logs in there. We got to get in there, take all that out. That's man hours that we got to pay for, you know? And like him or hate him, the man knows his business, okay? He really does. And I was just like, I was floored by the knowledge that he has. I didn't realize we had twelve hundred miles of dirt road. You know, I don't know how many, I think it was, he said like thirty low water crossings. I'm trying to remember all this stuff. It was just, the man was just speeding stuff, so. You know, I think we need to know whether, whether I'm assigned public works or I'm assigned something else, that's not the point. The point is you've got to get in there and you've got to get engaged with these departments. Period. There's my pers, my, my perception and then there's their perspective. My perception doesn't trump their perspective. I need to bring myself down to their level so I can see what they're looking at and that's their perspect, uh, perspective. Make sense?
Yep.
So I've got nothing but good things to say about public works. I really do. Um, I, I, I really don't have anything bad to say about any of the departments. I mean, I've, I've gone around, I've been in Ms. Walker's section, I've been in Treasurers, I've, I've been all over the courthouse. You know, we have issues, yeah, but I guess what I'm trying to tell you guys is it's never going to be me against you. Okay, on any issue. That's not how I'm going to operate. I'm going to work where it's me and you against the problem. Okay, please understand that. So I'm open to whatever you guys, just, I mean, let me have it and, and like I said, we can work this out and if we don't want to do it, we don't want to do it. We want to do it, great. If you guys want a specific department, let me, let me know. I'm done. Thank you.
Discussion.
Uh, I think we talked about this last week and, um. Commissioner Tran had already agreed to take on public works. And, uh, I don't mind being in the courthouse. There's not a lot of employees that work for the commission in the courthouse.
Are we just doing, uh, commission or are we just doing, uh, like even with the, being a point of contact for the elected officials in those areas?
We could certainly be a point of contact, but once we give them their budget, we all well know.
Well, they, yeah.
Their things are their things and we're not going to interfere with their employees and, and things. We're not, I'm not, so.
I'm the Debbie Downer.
Huh?
Where's the, where's the money going to come from that would be allocated in your, um?
Oh, that thousand dollars. I think what he means by that is if, if David needs, um, to repair the elevator, he's not going to have to come in front of the commission and say, I need to repair the elevator. It's only going to be nine hundred dollars. I can just tell him, well, go ahead, David.
Yeah.
You know?
No, I don't want my own credit card.
Yeah, yeah.
That's, that's not my business.
Uh, and I think that's where everybody's kind of, they've already kind of worked autonomously, you know, they know what they need, um, and, and I'll tell you, everybody pinches pennies. It's not, we use paper and, you know.
I think this came up when the elevator broke again and on, on short notice, we had to make a meeting and.
Yeah.
Talk about how much we were going to spend to.
Yeah.
Get that going.
Those are usually large expenses that you probably ought to talk through anyway, but, yeah. Okay, so it's not additional money.
I don't think so. That was budget money.
There's a lot of moving parts in, in that, in that department. I mean, it's like. I'm listening to, I'm listening to constituents and they know who they are. They're listening at home. I'm listening to constituents because, you know, when I, when I got appointed, I said, I'm going to listen to you. I may not agree, but I'm going to listen to you and I did. And so I listened to them at first and I walked away and then I listened to more and I walked away and I called them up and I said, and I really, we really had long conversations. And, you know, some of the stuff they're bringing to the table, it's, it's, it is viable. I mean, I understand. But then once I started digging into it, I'm like, wait, there's a money component to this. And everything that we do in accounting comes down to money and you're going to hear something else later on that I'm going to talk about and it's going to be about money. And my thing is real simple is like, this is not my money. This is your money. And I'm not going to go out there and spend your money in a wanton fashion. That's not going to happen with me. So when I look at it, I look at things very strategically and like, if you, if you take in a product and you only make so much money off of that product, but it's the time and the resources that you expend towards processing that product is double what you're making, then we need to talk about it. Make sense? So these are things that, like I'm saying, and I've only had, what, maybe two days with these guys and not even two days, not two full days, eight hours, I think, eight, nine hours total. So.
Well, we don't, we don't have to worry about rural fire. They're their own governing body, so that's one thing you don't have to worry about.
Here's what I was, uh.
But EMS, don't forget about that.
Here was my, my, uh, initial thought process was that it was, you know, the way that they had talked, it was uh, a voice or a point of contact even with elected officials, but then, so if you break it down, um, public works, landfill, um, courthouse, uh, is, uh, appraiser maintenance and actually emergency management is in there and then public safety would be EMS and, um.
Nine on one if we take it.
Well, no, because that's part of the sheriff's department.
Not necessarily. It might not be.
Well.
It can be under the commission or the sheriff.
Right now, yeah, okay, um.
Right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
You're right, but that's, that's a different conversation.
Well, I mean, it hadn't been decided yet.
So, so I, what I'm, what I'm, my point or my input on this is, is that if Commissioner Tran, uh, wants to take public works and landfill and you take the courthouse, I would take public safety, but I would want emergency management to be part of that.
Sure.
So that would be EMS and emergency management, kind of splits it up, even though he ends up with, uh, quite a few, uh, employees in that, in that realm, but, uh, I think that might work. So at least to start off, we'll see how it works out. And we can always go back and say it's not working.
Right. And then the other thing too is right now there's the three of us.
Yeah.
In the future, there'll be five of us, so I, we need to be cognizant of that fact and that we may have to re-engage this next, early next year when we do have five on board. Make sense? So this is not, this is a very fluid situation, um.
You have some potential to bring on and split them off.
Yes.
And have them tag along for a while.
Yes.
Till you guys do that, so it's not.
You know, so it's, yeah, so we can do that and then, um. I will say, I'm just going to say it. After our conversation last week, I, I went home and I was ready to table this, this, what I'm doing now. And it wasn't until I went out and talked to them that I was like. It was Cohen. I talked to Cohen and then we talked about it and I said, well, let me go talk to these guys, but once I went out there and shook everybody's hand, it was that moment right there. I'm like, you know what? I'm all in on it. So that's why this is here tonight. So I thank all you guys that were there for talking to me and, you know, being open to this idea.
Make a motion.
I motion that. We formulate the commissioner liaison group. Um, I will modify the letter, um, so that I will be the public works liaison, Commissioner Milburn will be the liaison for courthouse and the ancillary duties within it, um, and Commissioner, um, Bearbauer will be the liaison for the sheriff and, uh, EMS.
And emergency management.
And emergency manager.
Second. Bearbauer?
Yes.
Milburn?
Yes.
Tran?
Yes.
Okay, uh. Let's see here. Cameras. Still on here. So. I, in, in light of some of the stuff that we learned, I'm willing to think maybe this ought to be tabled.
Good idea.
I would, I would agree, sir.
So I'll just, uh, uh, I move that we table it till, uh, a future date. Maybe it goes down on the bottom here until we, till we get some other answers in some other areas and make some other decisions, so.
Okay. How about, I like giving things a date. Can we table it till the twenty-fifth of August?
Okay.
And it may resolve itself by then.
Yeah, okay. Works for me.
You have the number on hiring firing.
Huh? Okay. Well, is that in here?
Yeah, it's.
Oh, that was part of that.
Yes, sir.
So I did have that memorandum that I brought out last week. Uh, and we tabled it to this week. I did talk to Dr. Cohen and he said that, uh, he thought that it was, uh, a good ideal to have something in place until we get the employee handbook.
Go to it.
So you guys still got your copies of that?
Well, I, I didn't see it on the agenda, so I didn't put it in my.
I didn't either, but if you want to read it, that's fine. If you want me to read it, I'll read it for you.
Okay. No, I can read it. It, uh, is a memorandum and it goes to all the, all the directors under our, under our umbrella. And I included in there because of the current situation, I included the, um, the appraiser and, uh, the senior custodian, David Neville, as well as, uh, emergency management, uh, Brian Allen, but it is from. Uh, the following memorandum will take effect, uh, immediately as the operating policy for hiring and terminating employees with Bourbon County relating to public works department, Bourbon County EMS, appraisers office, courthouse maintenance, department and emergency management. The Bourbon County Employee Handbook is void of a hiring policy providing guidance for supervisors in the selection process. An effective hiring policy focuses on attracting, assessing and selecting the best candidates while ensuring fairness, consistency and legal compliance involves a well-defined, uh, process that includes clear job description, structured. structured interviews and a thorough background checks. The Bourbon County Employee Handbook termination policy is located within disciplinary policies on page fifty-eight through sixty-two. Termination of employees mentioned on page fifty-nine as step three of this policy. Uh, at will employment is mentioned in the beginning of this handbook inform employees that no con- no contract of employment has been entered into and that either party may terminate without cause. Uh, an effective termination policy provides a clear, legally compliant and respectful process for ending an employee's employment. It should outline the steps, guidelines and rules that management and HR must follow ensuring fairness and consistency while meman- minimizing, minimizing the legal risk." Um, so then, the memorandum. So the Employee Handbook does not establish job performance evaluation program. Employees have no formal guidance to help them build on their job performance. An effective employee performance evaluation policy should be comprehensive, fair and transparent outlining clear expectations, evaluation criteria and feedback mechanisms. It should emphasize, emphasize ongoing communication development and alignment of an individual's goals with organizational objectives. The Human Resource Department is in the process of updating the handbook and completing a supervisor policy section. In the interim, the Department Heads for Public Works, the Bourbon County EMS and Appraisers Office, the Courthouse Maintenance Department and Emergency Management in regards to current vacancies, disciplinary action or potential termination of employees from Bourbon County will, will be reported to the Human Resource Department and approved by the Board of County Commissioners. That's the memorandum. And I move that we adopt this memorandum.
Do you want changed payroll items to come to you?
Hmm?
In these departments, anytime there's a change to payroll, that could be an increase, that could be a demotion, all those things, those come through our office, would you like for those to come to you for approval? 'Cause right now they're just sitting in our office with the department head's signature.
Well, the approval portion of it is, basically it goes against the whole liaison type of thing, but we're not talking about liaison, I'm just thinking out loud. Um, but I definitely would like to have the essay on it, I want the situational awareness, you know, because-
It used two years ago, come to the commission and it quit a couple of years ago.
I, I mean, how often does it happen?
A lot, a lot, yeah.
But again, it just, just so that I have situational, for me personally, I would like to have situational awareness, uh, of what's happening, what's transpiring, I'm never, I'm never gonna tell the director what to do. But I will question, so why do we do this, why, 'cause I need to understand how people think. And I need to make sure that how they think and what they do is in compliance with the standards that we're trying to formulate. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
That's my take on it, so.
Um, I could forward them to Dr. Cohen. Did this have discussions with you or I can just forward them to you?
No, that's a very good point, have it go to Dr. Cohen and if he thinks it's-
Yeah, I kinda thought all this stuff would go to Dr. Cohen.
All right.
Um, and I thought that the Employee Handbook, I read it a couple of times, I thought there was a, uh, performance evaluation in the handbook.
I haven't been done in years.
Well, but is it in the handbook?
I don't know.
I don't, I, when I reviewed it, I didn't see anything about employee evaluation.
It's, it's more like verbal, you know? After six months, you give them, you know, "Hey, you're doing a good job, we're gonna go ahead and give you your fifty cents" or whatever. So those are things you-
So this kinda has to go along with the salary schedule, if you're gonna have a performance evaluation and tell somebody they're doing a good job.
Really, I just, that was just pointing out that it's not in our handbook.
Yeah.
But really, the memorandum centers more around the hiring and, uh, firing of employees, uh, without going through, you know, first going through-
Well, we're not out at EMS, we don't know if they're doing what they need to be doing and if, and if Terry says that she needs somebody to come or go, what Terry says goes because she's the director and I'm not there.
So you don't want HR to be involved in termination?
HR, not me, I'm not HR.
Yeah, but you're not terminating people, Commissioner Milburn, all you're doing is you, you're gathering that information, somebody's just coming in saying, and I don't care if it goes through Mr. Cohen or Dr. Cohen or comes directly to me, either way, as long as I know something's happening. That's, that's it, that's it, it's just the knowledge, it's for situational-
And I think, you know, if you wanna, if you wanna take the, the board out of this and you don't wanna be part of it, I still think Human Resources needs to be part of that process.
Take the board out, yeah.
And there are times, I can tell you from the past, that there are situations, they need to be terminated that day.
Yeah.
And I don't know if you guys wanna call a special meeting to-
Well, that, I, I think that, yeah, that's, that's what I'm saying, so if we take the board out and, and just, I do think that everybody should consult, uh, our HR to make sure we're doing things to compliance. I, I think that because we've, we've provided that resource and it needs to be utilized, but I don't know where I come in besides the fact that we've hired that HR resource.
Yeah, what I don't wanna see is that there's no accountability for what's happening, 'cause if HR's not aware of it and four months later, we're sitting here and, "Oh, Mr. John Doe, he's been, like, terminated," like, what? When did that happen? You know, yes, ma'am.
I think you guys can utilize all those ideas and funnel it through Dr. Cohen. Get your memorandum, make sure it goes through him, make sure that he's aware of the hiring, firings, the demotions, promotions, and then notify Dr. Cohen of your liaison and he will notify you of your section, your section. That way you guys aren't getting them alone, but-
Would you want to rewrite your memorandum to add to the handbook to just make sure you're covered?
Well, and we approve the handbook, the memorandum goes away, I mean, once we, once we approve it, 'cause I'm, I'm pretty sure that it's in the new handbook.
I probably need to-
I don't have a long minute to read that, though.
I probably need to get that out to department heads.
What, the memo?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we probably need to have-
So I'll rewrite it and bring it back next week.
That'd be perfect.
Okay. So next item is public comments of items not on the agenda. First up is, and I, I don't know what order these come in, and I've been flipping them around, so I'm just gonna go with Mr. Campbell, Clay Campbell, Public Works.
Man, you about to hit on everything, can you sit here and I'll sit here?
I'm sorry?
You about to hit on everything.
Oh, no, you're good, bro. So what you gotta say?
So I'm Clay Campbell, I'm retired for a while and I decided to go back to work. And I work at the Public Works Department, three days a week, I'm, I'm limited to a thousand hours a year and I'm a mower. Um, I'm here right now to tell you guys that we have a problem at the county works. We've got some guy, good people that have left, some on their own accord, some not. And there are more coming, I think one was announced today, a lead person, and we're in trouble. I don't care what you guys, I don't know if you guys have been out in the county, we're in trouble. 'Cause I think there's some more coming. I wanna thank you for coming out and spending your time. Micah, have you been with Eric and on a Saturday driving around?
My first week.
Yeah. Since your conversation with Eric, that you have been out there and he said you haven't, have you been out there?
Yeah.
Okay. We missed you.
I didn't go for a five-hour ride.
We missed you.
Yeah.
I would like for Commissioner Milburn to come out, back out and maybe introduce herself to us. But there is a morale problem out there and it started about two weeks ago, maybe three. Um, we've lost a couple of good guys, uh, we're probably gonna lose one, I think we lost one today, but I'm not gonna comment on that. But I do know the exit door is not done swinging. And I'm here, not because of my situation, I'm the lowest paid person in the county, I signed the dotted line. I'm fine. I'm worried about the kids, the, the people out there that are trying to raise a family. And we have a pay issue and I know there's a budget issue, but we have a pay issue. And it's gotta get addressed. I'm being told that some of the people's insurance that they have to buy went up when it went local. I'm being told that, this is just 'cause of what I'm being told, I'm being told that there's rumor going around that January one, that the employees are gonna have to start paying their insurance. The exit door's gonna keep swinging. And what are you gonna do when nobody's around to pave the roads? What are you gonna be, what are you gonna do when there's nobody there to mow? What are you gonna do when there's, instead of four dump trucks driving, there's two? I've been told that we could raise the mill. I don't think that's the solution to getting us money because when the mill gets raised, this department gets their money, this department gets their money, this department gets their money, when it comes around to Public Works, we saw how many money paid Public Works. So what you done is you raised the mill and the guys didn't get a raise. So you've raised their prop, one guy's already checked, his property tax will raise three hundred and fifty dollars a year. So now you haven't given him an increase, and I'm not saying that's gonna happen, I, I've seen it happen. So he doesn't get a raise, but his property tax goes up, that's a, that's a cut in pay. We lost, and I talked to Commissioner Milburn about it and we had a nice discussion about the, the dump. I don't use the dump, I used it since I've been a county employee, three or four times, I think. But some of those guys out there are stuffing trash bags and trash cans and taking it out there all at once and they use it. And it's like, I think Commissioner Tran and I discussed, probably some of them are using it three times each month, I think twice would be good. And Commissioner Milburn says it was illegal to have that perk and not report it, right? Is that correct?
It's a taxable benefit.
Okay, so if I'm a part-time city employee or a full-time city employee, I get free golf, that's probably seven or eight hundred dollars a year. I get free aquatic center and I get free background, we're probably approaching a thousand dollars worth of perks. And all we were asking for was a twenty-dollar dump fee a couple of times a month. And we got taken away from us two weeks after Public Employee Appreciation Week. Now that was, that was fun. It wasn't a big deal to me, but it was a slap in the face. But I don't know how these, these young men out there are supporting a family, maybe they should be on your budget committee because they know how to balance a budget on what they're getting, they really do. And I'm just, I'm just here to say I had a lot, a lot more to say, Commissioner Tran took care of it. Um, but we better open our eyes 'cause dark days are coming, 'cause we're not gonna have anybody working out there. And I know it takes money, I know we don't have money. But it, if you're not out there and you don't know what six or, five or six more people are gonna do if they leave, we're all gonna get a big surprise and everybody that's listening at home and here do not realize what's gonna happen when we don't have anybody running a paver machine, we don't have enough people running the paver machine, we got paving season, that should've already happened, but weather. And but, we're behind on the mowing. We're behind on, um, probably gravel, but it, a lot of that's due to the weather and getting out on the muddy roads and tearing them up worse, but you guys' phones are gonna ring off the hook unless something gets addressed. And I know you can't make it happen overnight, but I'm, I'm speaking for the people out there that are scared to, and I said I'll speak.
And when we address it, our phones will ring off the hook as well because it will take raising the mill to bring in enough money to cover the additional benefits and the raises that you're talking about.
I, I do totally agree with that.
So it's gonna ring off the hook either way.
Oh, yeah, yeah, but-
I just want you to know something, and I meant this when I said it out there, no matter what happens, no matter what happens, no matter how this, this goes down, we care. You understand that? We care, I like, I don't want this to happen, I really don't. I wish it would go just, but somebody spent a lot of money that we didn't have. So now we just have to pick up the pieces, we have to fix it and it's, and the, the messed up thing about this is, it's not, it's you guys out there, the fourteen thousand people out, it, it's on your shoulder, this is what, that's, I'm just gonna say it. It's on you guys and that's, that's a shit sandwich.
But we're, we're gonna try to go into this without leadership and it's-
I know.
It's, it's crazy, it's crazy to think about.
My apologies.
What did I do?
No, I said poop sandwich, I used the other word.
I'm offended.
Oh, wow.
No, I'm good.
Sorry.
But in a serious note, I mean, it's a tough fix because of what you guys have dealt. But we should've probably thought of that before we started having problems and people leaving.
Uh, let's just clean that record up. I appreciated Public Works from the beginning and I knew what we had from the beginning, so you, so I don't appreciate you addressing the commission that way.
Like what? Like what?
Like that we didn't know what we had.
Oh, I, did I say that?
Alluded to it.
No, I did not say that.
Before people start leaving.
I think that we should've probably thought about what we had before we started. People didn't leave on their own, they did not wanna leave, and you know that, I know you know that. People didn't leave on their own, but there was things that was done and people got upset and they left. And now we're gonna have a big problem. I didn't say that you didn't, whatever you said, I didn't say that.
Thanks, Clay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Clay. Next up will be Clint Walker, Budget and First Responders.
I'm Clint Walker and I came with gifts. If you would take one, pass it on around, you give one to the other commissioner. You don't have to go through it and look at it, I've already highlighted or, or underlined what the important stuff is. And you can open it up, but, uh, if you look one there, there's one article about employee benefits and stuff, that's not where we're going. Where we're gonna go is here, the Sheriff's Department in that county came in and said that he, would they take and lower his budget by eighty-nine thousand, well, it's right there.
Right.
Okay, and then the commissioner come back and said, "Are you gonna be able to pay for your new deputy?" And the sheriff responded, "Yes." Now if you open that up and you go to, oh, uh, they have editorial in it, and that Sheriff's Department Corrections has taken and gave that county one point four million dollars for housing prisoners. And really, that really don't reflect it because there's another article running around that he's actually gave them one point six million that went to the general fund. And the only reason I'm bringing that up is just information, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
You want your papers back?
No.
Thank you.
That has lots of information in it.
It sure does.
I go to different counties and I get the paper from Allen and Lynn and, you know, all over and Crawford.
Thank you, sir.
And, oh, I'm sorry, one last thing and I owe Commissioner Tran this, I read in a Crawford County newspaper, there's three different types of grants you can get to repair this building and I'll, I'll bring that to you so you will have the information.
All right, sir.
Like I said, it's only information only.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, next up is Mr. Randy McAlty, thank you, sir. Solar Farm?
Yeah, they're, uh, this is the first meeting I've come to, I, I've talked to, uh, different people about the solar farm, I, I live between Bronson and Uniontown and, uh, then north of Fifty-four Highway. And I haven't even known- And I haven't even known they was gonna put a solar farm in right across the road from my house. And I lived right on the road. And, uh, I, I'm having trouble finding out what the status is on that. I guess you guys have probably covered some of the business on the solar farms that they're gonna be putting in up there. I know the county had to sign off an approval to let this be done. The sad part is, nobody, nobody told any of the taxpayers that something like this might, might become wrong. And the reason I, I, I don't want it, 'cause like I say, it's right across the road from my house, and this house will be left to my, to my kids. And I don't imagine if there's a whole bunch of solar panels trashing up the, the area there, there's probably gonna be hard to find people to buy it, you know, when, when it comes time for that. Uh, I've talked to, I'm a member of, uh, Beekeepers Association down at Pittsburgh. And we have people come in from, uh, from Missouri that lives just across the line. And they talked about solar farms that they was aware of over by where they lived. And they didn't have anything good to say about it. And, uh, some of the, you know, and, and I've got, I've got farm animals and, and I'm beekeeper. And, uh, I don't know how, has any studies been done? Health studies? Do, does anybody keep up with you guys and let, let you guys know the status of, you know? Is this gonna be built, or?
I, I don't know where your location is, and I, and I've asked for a couple of maps about.
I'm on Fifty-Fifth Street, right off Highway fifty-four and a mile and a half north.
What street?
Fifty-Fifth.
Fifty-Fifth Street, uh.
Uniontown Bill.
Oh, okay.
One mile to the west, one, one and a half miles.
Okay.
Yeah. But I, I'm, I'm not, you know, I.
Who's, who's the landowner across the street from you?
Uh, it'd be Georges, like Gail George and his family. But, uh, like I say, I, it's hard to get any information about what's going on. Does anybody? I don't even know if anybody really cares.
I've asked for a map to, to find out what projects are where, and I can, I believe when we get that map, that's definitely public, is it not, Susan? So when we get that map, uh, Susan will have it, and you can ask the clerk for it, okay?
Okay. But, uh, I don't know. Maybe I'm just wasting my time.
We're, we're gonna get the map. I, I'm gonna get the map and we'll find out what is.
But that's not, that's gonna tell me where they're gonna put it. It's not really gonna tell me if.
Yeah, and, and, and.
And a few meetings ago, Mr. Beerbauer, and a few meetings ago before I was the commissioner, there was one development that came and asked to terminate their agreement. So it does matter where the map is, and it, and it will get you some information.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay. Well, I appreciate your comment.
Yeah, thank you.
Before you go.
Have a good day.
But before you go, keep doing what you're doing. Keep coming to these meetings. Keep after us. Keep talking to us. Because it's important that we hear from everybody, okay?
Yeah. Well, you know, they, they claim that, uh, it affects the honeybees and everything else under navigation and stuff like that. So there may be a lot more to this than what somebody's idea was. Let's, let's have solar farms. Let's have windmills. I'm, I'm not totally against it, but unless it's gonna affect.
Yes, sir.
You know, animals.
Yeah.
You know, my property values, stuff like that.
Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Okay, that ends that portion. So we're at new business. And first up is Southeast Kansas Regional Planning Commission. Mr. Greg Motley, make my move.
Does not involve dancing. It involves people who are moving from one location to another, in particular, people who uh, moved from an urban setting to a rural setting. Uh, the people that, uh, started Angie's List recently sold that corporation for lots of money. And then they started this company, uh, as a way to help Indiana, Indiana, uh, attract people who wanna leave urban settings to move to rural Indiana. And it worked extremely well there. And they've exported it across the United States now. And the state of Kansas has, uh, entered into a relationship with them to do, uh, an, an eighty-twenty funding split between, uh, rural counties and the state of Kansas, with Kansas paying eighty percent and us paying twenty. They've, uh, entered into an agreement with S E K R P C, who's gonna manage it for Southeast Kansas. And what, what we would get if we entered into this, there's four other counties in Southeast Kansas that have signed up. We'd be the fifth. Uh, it would cost us twelve thousand five hundred dollars. And what we would get is a, uh, part of their website, their national, international website, actually, because they, they've gotten people from six, uh, foreign countries. Uh, people who are looking to move to a rural area. There'd be job listings, uh, for, uh, Bourbon, Bourbon County resident, or businesses. And, uh, they, they pay a seven thousand five hundred dollar incentive for an employee to move to Bourbon County, which is part, which would be part of this deal. The state of Kansas is paying most of that. Um, it's, it's a, it's an app on a phone. Um, their headquarters in Kansas are in, uh, Lincoln, Kansas, which is, uh, pretty near Salina. Uh, so if we sign up for this, uh, we would get to design our, our own website or our own, uh, piece of their website, their own page. Uh, we'd get to design what amenities the town has. I think the reason this is good for Bourbon County is, um, I think our, our county has the best amenities of all the other S E, S E K counties. And so I think we can distinguish ourself from other S E K counties by the amenities that we put on there. Th- this is a quick turnaround. So, uh, they just contacted me last week. I've spent time with the people in Indianapolis on the phone, talking to them about how it launched. Uh, the state of Kansas obviously thinks it's credible since they're funding eighty percent of it. So everything that I've looked at and vetted, it's, it's a fantastic, uh, opportunity for us. They've had a lot of success. They've, uh, they've attracted people from forty-seven states, six foreign countries. Um, it's been highly successful thus far. Uh, we might spend this money and just completely bomb out, but, um, I think it's worth a shot since we're not spending any money on economic development. S E K R P C is our economic development. And I, so I think this is a way to engage them in an effective way that can draw higher-paid, uh, employees to our county, and see where we go from there. I, I think also we, we could probably approach the city in splitting this money with us. Uh, because the city's gonna have most of the employers. And, and so it's really the employers that are gonna benefit. The seventy-five hundred, the idea behind that is that's gonna be about the moving costs of somebody moving from Chicago, uh, or Kansas City to here. So, so that's, that's the ask, is twelve thousand five hundred dollars to, to join this program, put Bourbon County in this program. S E K R P C would administer it, and, uh, we would have to appoint a person to connect with S E K R P C. And I'm already the representative. Economic development is, is kinda my thing. So I would volunteer to be the, the point person, uh, to work, uh, at building the web, webpage and in our, in our, our section of the app. So, anyway, that's, I sent you guys this, uh, PowerPoint, uh, by email. Has all the math. I mean, the state of Kansas is investing a lot of money in this, so.
When did you, when did you need to?
Probably, uh, tomorrow or Wednesday, probably. It's a quick turnaround.
How are you gonna talk to Fort Scott, City of Fort Scott?
I'm gonna talk to them tomorrow if you guys approve.
What about, uh, do we have money in the Economic Development Fund? Do we have money to, to fund this? Somewhere. What about what's in the commissioner's discretionary? Seems like they use that a lot before.
No, they don't have, you don't have discretionary.
You mean we have dust?
Yeah. Would you guys be interested?
If we don't have a murder trial, you have some money there.
Would you guys be interested in a?
Just being honest.
Okay, I'm sorry, say that again, please.
If you guys aren't interested in improving this right now and waiting to see what the City of Fort Scott says, because we need to know if we need to do twelve thousand or sixty-two fifty, would you guys be interested in having a meeting Wednesday? Just a special meeting for this Wednesday?
I'm, I'm, I'm game for that at four thirty.
Afternoon.
They have a meeting at four thirty.
Well, let's, how about four? It wouldn't take very long.
We could do it right before their meeting, I suppose.
We can, can, we have to do it in here. You guys at?
We could do it, we could do it at the beginning of the, of the, of our meeting, 'cause it's a budget-related item, so.
Okay, so special meeting Wednesday.
Four thirty.
In the meantime, I'll look and see where your discretionary money might come from.
Don't, don't see anything under there.
Well, I gave up all my benefits, so I mean, there's gotta be some money there.
We budget that every year.
And believe me, I know how tight money is, but I just thought this was worthwhile to bring forward.
Yeah, I do, I do agree.
Can I get a copy of that for records?
You can have that one.
Thank you.
It's got my scribble.
It's all right. I just need it for records.
All right.
Boards assigned to commissioners.
Nine-one-one, boards assigned to commissioners. I was, uh, kinda thinking that you guys had some boards, but apparently not.
No, we've skated out of the radar there.
Yeah, you guys tried to stay out of the radar for a long time.
Job description.
They do need some boards.
I don't think anybody is going to join ready. Uh, I'm not.
Well, I, I, I don't even think that should even have been on there.
I will take, uh, the fair board if nobody wants that.
Uh, I don't think that was.
Do you have a list?
Yeah, I have a list. Do you want it?
Please?
Let me find mine. It was on here.
It's in the agenda.
Well, you print on both sides. I'll, I'll give you a packet of paper if you would print on one side.
I, I actually take the agenda and then I put it in order in my book so I can just flip pages. David, you're on several boards already, so.
I'm, I'm wanting to pass off some of these boards. That's what I'm talking about.
Who's on, who's on the S E K Regional Planning Commission?
Greg.
Greg.
I don't wanna step on his. How often do they meet?
Once a month in, in, uh, June. Are you?
That, that might be, I'm sorry to interrupt, but when they meet, I remember when they did this the first time back in January, most of them were on Mondays or Tuesdays. At, yeah, it.
So what do you say? Is that conducive to having a? This meeting?
Their meetings are Thursdays, ma'am.
What time?
But, uh, well, I guess what I was saying is if you pick up two meetings on Tuesday, at, on the same Tuesday, at the same time.
Thursday.
Yeah.
Yeah, except for that one.
Cause our, uh, our health meeting is tomorrow.
Yeah, and it is in town.
Yeah, so I'll be there. I hope.
Sam, you can sure do that. You're not gonna hurt my feelings.
Oh, I mean, I'm just, I'm just, you know, I don't wanna shirk my duties. Like, it's like something that I like to sit in on.
Well, we need somebody since to take over. I would like somebody to take over mental health. Juvenile, I'll keep, I'll keep, but, cause.
Well, one of the mental health, they, they have other board members already.
We are on that board.
But we got, didn't.
They have a board of directors, but there is also a board that county, uh, members sit on.
Yeah, just put me down for the Regional Planning Commission, please, and I don't like the way you laugh about that. That's, that's almost, yes, like you.
No, I'm glad that you took on a board.
Greg?
So you're kicking Greg off and taking it?
Uh, no.
No.
Oh, I still can't find that list.
Brings back too many bad memories in mental health.
That's just advisory-type.
Oh, I'll take that one. Okay.
Mental health, is that the one with the gentleman that came here?
Folsen, Mr. Folsen.
How often do they meet?
Huh?
How often do they meet?
I haven't been to a meeting. For obvious reasons.
There's area on aging left there.
Yeah, put me down for the aging.
Go through all this.
Since I am aging.
Soil conservation is, uh, really advisory.
Yeah, I got that one.
So I got two.
I got two.
I got three.
There you go, Mr. Beerbauer. Awesome. Way to lead.
See, Southeast Kansas Mental Health Department does not have a name with it.
Me and mental health does not go well.
Well, and that's obvious.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
No, 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 duly noted.
This meeting's going too long.
It just slipped right out.
Yeah, I know, I know. It's the marine in him. Thank you, man.
You should've said point of border. So who? I haven't been following, so. I've been trying to find the paper, so who's where?
We've got S E K Mental Health yet to fill.
Or do we? Nobody's doing ready, right?
No, I marked it off the list.
And you're doing fair board? Commissioner Melbourne?
Yes, yeah.
Will they be reaching out to me, or do I need to reach out to them?
I can send them all emails.
All right, thank you.
Commissioner Tran is doing aging?
Yes, sir, and planning.
And planning, so we kick Greg off of there.
Wait, we're not making, you gotta take something else, sir.
In January.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. He's got, he's gotta get elected first. Soil conservation. You wanna do that, too?
I really think.
I think she was.
Are you on soil?
You're on soil conservation.
I really think you guys oughta, some, one person should take area on aging and Bourbon County citizens, because there seems to be a lot of conflict there.
Oh.
Would you agree with that?
Bourbon County senior citizens?
Yeah.
How often do they meet?
I tell you what, if, if you take, if you take senior citizens with the aging, I'll take mental health.
All right, I'll do it. How often do they meet?
I don't know.
Find out.
I think as long as I got.
I'll treat them just like I treat.
Do you need a motion? Yeah, probably.
You think you got it all?
Yeah, I, I took notes, so.
Yeah, I got them.
I move. We adopt Bourbon County Senior Citizens for Commissioner Tran, Fair Board for Commissioner Melbourne, Juvenile Detention for Commissioner Beerbauer, S E K Area Aging for Commissioner Tran, S E K Regional Planning, Commissioner Tran, Soil Conservation, Commissioner Melbourne, Southeast Kansas Health Department, Commissioner Beerbauer, and S E K Mental Health, Commissioner Beerbauer.
I'll second.
Tran?
Yes.
Beerbauer?
Yes.
Melbourne?
Yes.
So we each got three.
I have two.
Or you got two.
Yeah. Because nobody took ready.
All right, next up is.
Precinct Resolution.
Huh?
Precinct Resolution.
Mrs. Walker, precinct?
Yes, um, I hired Sam to get those done because they have to be published in July, so I'll have to publish them this week. And they had a. And they had a pretty quick turnaround, um, I don't know where I laid it.
Do you want this? I got one.
Yeah, we really need the original, I gotta find the original, cause you guys are gonna have to sign it. Maybe it's been passed around, I don't know. Um, anyway, they put together all of our precinct legals that are required by, um, Kansas statute to be approved, and so, um, all right, here they are.
How much do you count charges, do you know?
Um, she said it would, it'd be anywhere from eight to ten hours, so.
A hundred and fifty dollars an hour?
Yeah, a hundred and fifty dollars an hour, about fifteen hundred dollars. They already had all of our redistricting data, so, we use them, we use them for a lot of things, actually. Okay.
Is this the precincts or the townships?
Precincts.
Oh, this is a voting area?
Yes. So because of the commissioner districts, like Scott Township will now have five different precincts, because every commissioner is within Scott Township.
I move we adopt Resolution twenty-eight, twenty-five, uh, outlining the precinct legal descriptions because of moving from three to five commissioners.
Second.
Tran?
Yes.
Birbauer?
Yes.
Milburn?
Yes.
Insurance Committee guidelines request?
Yeah, we need to go ahead and get the insurance committee, uh, that we adopted the bylaws for and made a resolution for, we need to go ahead and, I think we need to get letters for that. So we need to put a date that we need to have letters in here to, and really try to drum up a committee. We need somebody that does not take our insurance, we need somebody that takes employee only, employee spouse, employee dependent, and employee family, we need five. So, an arrangement of people can send some letters in that work for the county, so, uh, the scope of what you're gonna do.
You wanna send out a memo to the department heads and have them pass that on to their people?
Yeah.
I've had two letters submitted so far.
Okay. They're gonna keep our budget in mind, they're gonna get input from other employees, review our insurance options, and come to the commission with a recommendation of how to move forward with our insurance. It'd be really nice if they have some experience.
I'd, uh, I mean, whatever, we're, we've got a couple of letters and then, so I would just send out a memo to the department head.
We're gonna give them a couple of weeks. We need the letters by, in a couple of weeks.
What happens if we don't get all the bodies that we need, what's the contingency plan?
We have to decide without them, if we don't get a committee, we have to decide what to do without them. And I'd like the employees to have an input. So I hope they send in some letters. So.
No offense.
The fourth of August.
That's not a contingency plan.
Well, you're the contingency, Sam.
Do we, um, should we look, okay, let's just say we don't get the bodies that we want in, in, in accordance to the, the guidelines that we set forth, you know, somebody with one kid, somebody with a wife, somebody, if we don't get those bodies that, that we're asking for to fit the, the square pegs, you know what I'm saying? Do we just open it up to any employee?
Well, no, because then your, your pool wouldn't be represented very fairly, because, you know.
My, my point, ma'am, is real simple, if we don't get the bodies and we end up, the three of us in there, well, we're not representing the pool either fairly.
Here's my concern, your open enrollment's in October. You're on a very limited timeframe.
Well, let's first see whether we get, let's give it a week.
Yeah.
Send out the memos to the direct, to, to the department heads.
All I'm asking is.
And, uh, of what we need and see if some people step up, cause maybe it hasn't just been advertised very well yet, so. Maybe that might, might get some bodies that way.
Okay, and will you ask, uh, we need to ask if they put their experience on what they can, their experience with insurance on their letter, Susan?
Okay.
Would paying for it count?
I probably would.
I would say, uh, warm bodies that, that are working and paying for, you know, insurance would be good enough.
Coming, if I may.
Oh, yes.
Coming from an entity that started this, it's very, very needed.
The, the insurance committee?
From an employee standpoint.
The insurance committee?
Yes.
Thank you.
And encourage your employees to take part.
Yes.
As long as they have a, a clear voice.
Yes. Thank you.
So you must listen.
Well, that's, that's.
Please take that in.
Yeah, well, just so everybody on record, I'm on record right now, it's like, if we're gonna formulate these committees, we're not gonna ignore the committees.
That's right.
Okay, unless, unless the recommendation is so far out there where it violates the statute or law, you know, I mean, the committees, we form them for a reason, we want the citizens to speak up, and we're gonna, we're gonna follow their recommendations to the best of our ability, okay?
Would you be willing to consider, um, if we have more than one in a category, because my, my experience has been, you have a young adult and somebody that's older, they have two completely.
Totally lived life experiences, yeah.
Yeah, perspective.
That would be, I, I personally don't have an issue with that, that, you know.
I don't have a, uh, issue as long as it's, you know, employees as far as I'm concerned.
Uh, my thought on that is the reason that we put one out of each category is because they all get a different, it, it pays different, depending on what, what they're getting.
May I suggest this, is just leave that door open, because in the end, we may not have.
I gotcha, okay.
So we can always. That's all, yes, ma'am.
I would also recommend emailing their heads and asking them to make recommendations.
Department heads?
Very good idea, yes.
Okay, we move in next.
Yep.
Department update, or no, Marion Township request.
All right, so. All right, so here's my letter to you guys, it's in, it's in, you guys have it, so. On or about seventeen July twenty-twenty-five, I received a phone call from Mr. Steve Geiger, a trustee of Marion Township requesting assistance to install a culvert in a roadway leading to the Hatch Cemetery. Mr. Geiger had spoken to the Director of Public Works, who informed Mr. Geiger that he needed to reach out to me on the matter. Mr. Geiger stated, a culvert will be provided for the install, the township is merely asking for assistance with manpower and equipment for the install, the location of this culvert is approximately three hundred yards from the county's right-of-way. I informed Mr. Geiger that I bring, uh, his request to the full board for consideration. Also, I wasn't sure how to spell, so I said, please forgive me if I misspelled his name, now, that is the issue, so, here's a couple of solutions. I asked Director of Public Works to give me a cost breakdown, minus, um, well, the price is on here, but anyways, um, it comes out, one cost is nine hundred and seventy-six dollars and fifteen cents for a twenty-four by twenty-inch culvert. You included the price on that, huh?
Put the culvert if you wanna do that way.
Okay.
What was the price?
Culvert, that's the other prices as well.
Yeah, hang, hang on, so. Okay, so I'm gonna give you two prices, one, the twenty-four inch by twenty-foot culvert is nine hundred and seventy-six dollars, okay? The eighteen inch by twenty-foot culvert is seven hundred and thirty-four dollars, that's the price for the culvert, plus their man-hours and permit fees and load of gravel, okay, that's all, that's what we, if we agreed to do this for them, this is what we're in, uh, in.
So you said twenty-four inch by ninety-six?
Twenty-four by twenty, twenty-four inch by twenty feet.
Is how much?
Nine seventy-six is, but I need, don't write that down, because I just realized what, what, uh, Mr. Bailey did here. So it's going to be five, six, six. No, you don't have that, she, it was handed to me a little bit before, um, so what Mr. Bailey says, we have culverts that are attic stock, meaning it's, it's, it was given to us by the windmill people? Could you please?
Yeah.
So anyways, that price, if we, if we provide the culvert, then it comes out to four hundred and nine dollars out of our budget, makes sense for that one? Because it's not costing us anything on that culvert. Seven thirty-four, minus thirty-two, that other one's gonna be three, four hundred bucks. So either way, both of these are gonna cost us four hundred bucks, that's not the issue. The issue to me is real simple. Do we wanna set a precedent?
That's the issue to me, yeah, yeah.
That's the issue.
Because, don't the, don't they get money?
Yeah, so here's.
They get money.
That's what I think, too.
So I do thirty budgets for townships and cemeteries, and out of all of them, they have almost nine cemeteries that they have to take care of. And they do that, um, the mowing and everything, they have done a great job of, they do it for eighteen thousand dollars. Most places are paying five to six just for one cemetery. So, um, and this was caused as a result of a neighbor to the cemetery, and they're having to put this culvert in.
Um, I didn't get that information.
Okay, I did this weekend, cause I came in to help the guy with the budget, so.
So they lost their access to the cemetery?
No, they have the access, but it's causing water damage to the cemetery.
To us is four hundred and some dollars.
From the adjoining property owner.
Cause, please explain where the cul, the culvert's coming from.
Your culverts are culverts that were used, plastic culverts that were used with the windmills when they were putting in temporary entrances, and then they removed those and, uh, asked if we would, they needed them gone, if we would come right out that day, we could have them, no cost to us. So we went out and we have them in inventory that we can use on projects like this, if you so choose to do that.
So, again, I don't have an issue helping, I have an issue of setting precedents. Because once you do for one, you have to do for all.
And you might run out of culverts and then it might start costing money.
No, that's not the cul, the, this, this time around, we have the culverts. Mr. Geiger was saying he'll provide the culverts, makes sense, so, and Mr. Bailey's saying, well, I have these leftover culverts, I'm like, okay, I get it. It's not necess, I mean, four hundred dollars is not gonna break the counting. But, again, four hundred dollars here, four hundred dollars there, for, that starts to break, you know, it can start adding up. Because today it's Mr. Geiger, tomorrow will be.
Yeah, I mean, I I have a hard time differentiating this from, uh, letting small city, small towns in our county, uh, use our landfill for free. I mean, to, 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 to haul in buildings, you know, rubble.
Well, it didn't cost us anything.
It does cost us to.
Yeah.
In fuel and employee wages, there's a lot that goes in when they bring that stuff in there and put it up there on top of that hill, it's gotta be buried, it's, I mean, there's, there's a cost to it, there's a cost to everything.
So do we, I'm just playing devil's advocate, so we just add on more cost?
It's gonna get added on somewhere.
I mean, I look at it like this here, I mean, uh, I was not a hundred percent for that, uh, deal with the, with the, the small towns, but when you look at it, in, in the broad scheme of things, it's neighbors helping neighbors. And so, when the townships are our neighbors, and the small towns are our neighbors, they're all within our, you know, uh, as far as their budgets and their stuff, I mean, we got asked, uh, I mean, I think last year it was asked about Bronson, or maybe it was the first part of this year, of doing some roadwork in Bronson, and, I mean, granted, they're probably gonna pay for most of it, but still, it is taking our time and our equipment away from, from what we should be doing to help them, so, for me, it's, it's a, it's a, I, I'm for it, I mean, even if it sets precedents, we're already setting precedents in other areas, so, I mean, I still think in the bottom, you know, the bottom line is, is that if we can help out and we got the, we got the, the excess stuff to do it, when we run out of all of it, then we're not gonna be able to, to, to offer that to somebody. But right now, we got, we got the piece of material that they need.
Okay.
So I don't see why not, but that's just my, my two cents.
That, you're saying they don't have enough money in their budgets to pay for the?
They just don't have, the townships and, um, cemeteries have very little funding coming into them. You know, like the cemeteries, they're maxed, they, they have a cap of what they can levy for, and it's six thousand dollars. Well, and it's hard for them to find people to mow their, some of these bigger cemeteries for six thousand dollars. I mean, the cost of fuel's gone up, and so they're just, they're almost begging.
Well, it's just now hard finding anybody to mow, period, I mean, I talked to, Memorial Days, when I get a chance to meet with a lot of these cemeteries, because we see quite a few of them, but, uh, the ones I talk to, they, they're like, yeah, we, you know, some of them are mowing them themselves, because they can't afford to, uh, or nobody wants to come and do it.
I had a gentleman in here that was eighty-three years old the other day, that has been doing this for years, and he's still mowing, and I just, because they can't find anybody to do it, and it's just, it's sad.
So.
Make your motion.
All right, so, I just wanna go on record says this, we will take these requests as a case-by-case situation, okay? The precedence, I mean, I, I agree with everybody here, um, so I make a motion that we go ahead and support Mr. Geiger completely, um, whereby they don't have to buy a culvert, we will use one of the ones we have in stock, per Mr. Bailey's recommendation.
I'll second.
Are you also doing the labor?
The whole thing.
The whole thing, okay, okay. Tran?
Yes.
Birbauer?
Yes.
Milburn?
Yes.
So, will you be reaching out, I think?
Yep.
Thank you, sir, and thanks, thanks, thanks for this information, I really appreciate it.
Yep.
And now we are, department update.
And I know I'm between, basically between.
Between us and a gentleman.
Exactly, so we're gonna go fast. Internet, I did not make the meeting tonight, I just wanna be very transparent, we were having some issues on Monday with internet at Public Works. Also with internet out at the landfill, and when we lose internet at the landfill, we cannot, um, run our credit card machine. My question is, yes, I can make a phone call, yes, I forget the name of our company.
Stronghold.
Stronghold, yes, they have been very good at responding, but they are in Joplin, or not in Fort Scott, and we have this issue, um, like today, had to go, they were helping me get through it, or what have you, but I had to go up on third floor in the closet up there to reset a backup battery power, or whatever it was.
Oh, UBS.
Yeah, so anyhow, what happens if that happens on a weekend, and we're needing the credit cards, hi, machine out at the landfill, or internet, or what have you, do we have a?
From what I understand, these aren't normal issues, and, and when they get us to the standard, we, we'll cease to have them.
I, I hope so, but it's been three, three Mondays in a row.
We've got some hiccups right now.
Yeah, a hundred percent.
And we haven't, we haven't started the projects that they, they recommended us do. We, we're just been, being reactive.
Okay, perfect, I'm good with that.
Which is what we've done for a very long time.
A hundred percent good with that, I just wanna make sure that it is out there and I am being transparent with everything.
Thank you.
On that, next thing, what about our radio towers and, uh, the repeater? Right now, we have a repeater in a out, I don't know the exact, I don't wanna say one hundred and eighty-fifth and Maple. Who has access to that, if we need to reset the repeater?
We've done it in the past.
IT department has, I've been able to make a phone call and they can get us in.
Oh, RIT did.
RIT previous, yes. I don't have the the lock information and/or key to get in the building.
Okay.
Um, prime example, yesterday when we were out, radio went off, and it was so staticky, something was going on with the repeater. Um, we couldn't make out what was being said, and we were only at Kansas and one hundred and forty-fifth, so. Not for sure where to go with that.
I'll ask.
Okay, perfect. And again, they have been very. And again, they have been very good, very responsive, meaning stronghold or what have you, but these are issues that. Especially with the radio towers, we need to get. Something figured out because we have areas where we do not have cell phone coverage in this county and we rely heavily on these.
Okay.
Radios in the trucks to be able to communicate, so anyhow. That's what I have on that. It's time for the landfill cost closure worksheet to be submitted back to KDHG. Ag engineering has reviewed this. Um, right now, the estimate is two hundred and nine thousand seventeen dollars and forty cents in order to. Um, have said, or we need to have that amount set aside or what have you in case we would have to close the landfill and reclamation. This is the new form that came out, I believe it was last year, but if we could get. Motion to second that and the chairman to sign it, that would be awesome so we can turn it in to the state and be in compliance.
Okay.
I am just trying to read it to decide what the motion is. That we have this.
Landfill closer.
Money?
Know that you approved the landfill closer closure cost worksheet.
And we'll assure that it's in reserves.
Yeah.
Okay.
How much do we have in reserve right now?
Depends depends on the year. Uh, last year, we ended just with about a hundred grand. Um, and so we made up the other hundred grand and two other funds.
So what are we at right now?
We can cover it right now, but at the end of the year, if we don't end with two hundred thousand dollars, then we're in violation.
I remember I remembered that conversation here at this table.
Okay, I move we approve the landfill closure cost worksheet and ensure that funds are in reserve.
Second.
Beer Bear?
Yes.
Milburn? Yes, Tran?
Yes. I have a copy. Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Do you guys wanna go?
Big open.
Jim. Did you finally get a recording back?
Problem with the phone, the voicemail or something.
Did you wanna look at that or?
You want a copy of that or? You need that or what we need there?
Yeah.
Okay. Next you have in front of you, the five year solid waste plan. If you wanna review it, that's fine. Don't have to take action tonight. But we need to take action pretty quick. This does not have to be renewed until twenty eighteen. But what has to be done is the committee members need to be updated. Um, you can have a minimum of five, maximum of thirty. So um, right now, that's what was done in twenty three. Last year, it was approved for. Um, Chairman Harris, Commissioner Beth and Commissioner Weisenhut, Frank Young and myself. Those were the five. Um. Frank Young is asked not to be on the. On there this year and I will not be here, so need to come up with five individuals. To put on there and supposed to been turned in by May twenty fourth. As we're all aware, you know, we've had some commission change. Now we got change here, but as the director, so. If you wanna table that, you wanna read through that, you wanna come back with.
Uh, this is a public works thing and that's your area if you would like to work on that and then we can bring it back next week. Okay.
Is that fine?
So it was supposed to be a uh it's a five year plan and you said twenty twenty eight's the next one or?
Twenty eighteen is when um or twenty twenty eight, I'm sorry, wrong numbers. It's getting late.
I I knew you said twenty eighteen. I was just assuming you meant twenty twenty eight.
That in there.
Basically, what we got, I got this yesterday, so basically what we gotta do is just find five people to be in there. And we need to change the signature block so that we're on the signature block.
Yeah. All right, it's pretty cut and dried, but finding your five, that's however you wanna do that. Um, last thing that I or one of the last things I have for you is I went ahead and. Put together. Where we're at on employees, positions that are open.
That's for my.
We we did lose.
Thank you.
A lead person today on our asphalt program, so I need a little bit of guidance from you. How you wanna proceed forward with the asphalt. Because we are down now to, we do not have. When the dust settles here in two weeks. We really do not have an asphalt crew. You'll see six names on there, I believe, and there's, I'm pretty sure there's more to tell.
And that sixth name does not include your name.
It does include mine.
Does it?
I believe so.
At the top.
Top.
Uh, yep, you're right. So right now, we don't have anybody to run the asphalt crew. We don't even have a full crew, do we?
And I've laid it out in each department there for you. Um, who does what?
So basically, right now, in in my summation of the whole asphalt mission is we are mission ineffective. You do not have the manpower to asphalt this year. And I was showing a road that we need to do this year. And having this conversation with this, until we get backfill on it, by the time we get backfill, the season may be, will be so far down the season. That we may have to push the asphalt until next year.
But I do wanna be very clear, though. If we can get our distributor truck back. It, we got ready to go this week and it's went down. It's at the shop, but they're telling us we'll have it back Wednesday. We will asphalt everything that we can asphalt with the crew that we have until we run out of crew members.
Okay.
Um, but we're not gonna be able to get everything done that we had said we would be able to get done along with the chip and seal. Um, I have a location and we can put the chips out south of town. Um. But they're not gonna want the chips at that location for a year, so um. My question to you is, do you want us to move the chips there? Knowing that we're not gonna have any, are gonna be very short on crew members, I'm not gonna say you're not gonna have any because you could have somebody show up that could. Do chip and seal for you. Do you want us to work on placing the chips at a location that's close to two hundred and fiftieth and two hundred and forty fifth? Um. Down south or not?
Remind me again, who who owns that property?
Um, Bedco and um. Or it's Bedco, I believe. And then Fort Scott Community College is using it for their truck driving school as well, but there is a location. On the south side that we can place the chips to have them available.
But those chips may be there for a year.
And I don't know that they'll go for that. I did not, I can call back and ask if they're good with them being there a year if you would like. Or or we can leave them at the quarry and they'll be on at the quarry until.
They're needed.
They're needed.
As with all the unknowns. Let well, let me let me digress first. Um, we're working the asphalt crew and they reached their forty hour limit. With with, I'm just asking, okay? With all the people that's gone, that budget is still there. Can we increase their hours? And the only reason I'm asking is I'm looking at is how do I maximize the manpower that we currently have until we don't have that manpower? So we have, we have one individual or team of of individual and they can do forty hours. And what you were doing is making them do forty hours and once we hit forty, they they're done for for the week. But if we have it in our, if you have it in your budget and we can make those, not make, we could ask those guys to work past their forty.
That's up to you.
Considering?
Yeah, I. As long as they're willing to to work the overtime, which I would.
Well, like I told you, I'm gonna say it publicly here. I'm not gonna make you do anything. I'm gonna ask you.
Yeah.
I'm not, that's what I'm thinking. It's just, all right, if we have the budget because we've lost people.
I think. To get that done, we could try it.
Oh, what do you think, though?
Well, I don't have a problem. I think it's a decent idea to try and get as much done before we lose everyone.
Are you guys good with that?
I'm gonna let Eric run it until he's gone. I'm not gonna interfere with anything.
Okay.
So.
Um, as well, I did ask Susan to help me on this, but here's the resolution on the sales tax. It tells you what can be paid for, what cannot be paid for. So that kinda lets you know. So if we do transfers. From sales tax into the road and bridge fund, that lets you know what can and cannot. What can be transferred for and what cannot be transferred for.
So when does this tax expire? This is twenty twenty one, twenty thirty one.
Day of June, twenty thirty one.
Oh.
Is this Fisher, the same one I met yesterday? Is this the same guy I met yesterday?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
So I just wanna make sure that I am clear. Leave the leave the chips at the quarry until we decide on that and go as hard as we can on asphalt and. While we can.
Without breaking it.
Yeah, exactly. That seems to be the.
Yeah.
Par for the course, but it is, that's part of construction.
Just just for the board's clarification, how many bridges do we have that we need? I I seen there were number six.
That you need.
That we need to.
To clear the debris under.
Well, to build. The debris was like, oh my God, it was almost like every bridge we went to.
You have a hundred and thirty four bridges. The there's some of them that are ranked, you know, different severe level. I would have to get those numbers for you. I I don't have that off the top.
And how are you doing on continent on the continuity book? You're going, plugging along pretty good on that?
On which part?
The continuity book, the book that you're compiling with all.
Hundred percent, yeah, yeah, getting everything.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, yes. So, thank you for going yesterday. Appreciate that.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you for going. So anyhow, anything else? Okay, if you have any questions, let me know.
Thank you, sir.
You bet.
Thank you. Have a good night. Okay, next up, Commissioner comments. Commissioner Milburn, you're first this week.
Oh, I have this. Yes, give me a moment.
No rush.
All my things in order.
Do you wanna do comments this one too?
This is suitable. I always write these before the meeting, but I look at the agenda and. It's not hard to figure out what's coming, so. Uh, Bourbon County, we don't have much choice but to make the most of what we have. As prices rise, households are forced to adjust their budgets. Whether that means cutting back on spending or seeking new sources of income. What's not sustainable is continuing to spend as usual without making changes. That only leads to deeper problems down the road. Before I became a commissioner, I observed these issues from the outside. And from what I've seen, while many have made efforts over the years, our community has, our community hasn't seen the kind of growth. That would support new revenue streams. So for this budget cycle, that option is simply not on the table. That leaves us with one path to cut back and do less. The difficult question is, what can we afford to reduce? I'm still working to answer that. In my view, we must start. And keep our essentials, our government, public safety, infrastructure, you know. What we have to have sheriff services, EMS, roads, nine one one services. Um, which now we know the county's gonna take back from the city, so. I know our roads aren't always in the shape that we'd like, but our public works team works tirelessly through the heat and the cold to keep them open. Especially during emergencies. This isn't easy to write and it's even harder to say, but we have to face it. What, where and how do we reorganize in a way that best serves our taxpayers? Citizens of Bourbon County, thank you.
Commissioner Tran?
It's been a very um busy week. It's been, I've learned a lot. I've seen a lot. It has not changed my view on people within Bourbon County. I think we have some of the hardest working, salt of dirt type people. And I'm just racking my brains out and figure to fix all this without raising taxes. You know, it's not what I want. It's not what I want to do. But I can't think of, I would have to agree with Commissioner Milburn on this. It's like, we're facing some really hard times ahead of us and. We'll see what happens. I just ask that you guys be patient. We don't know everything. We we we're working. We're changing things and some of it's working out really, really good. Some of it is stutter stepping. That's fine. It's okay. We'll course correct. But, you know, the budget, the whole having budget committee, having all these committees, I think it's working out for us. Just be patient. Just be patient with us and and but keep talking to us, please. I wanna hear it. That's all I have, sir.
All right, I have nothing. I move that we adjourn the meeting.
Second. Beer Bear?
Yes.
Milburn?
Yes.
Tran?
Yes.
And you're gonna give us that other contract, Susan, is that right? Which one? I just remember there was another contract. I asked you.
Did we have a contract?
I have to remember.